They are out of the room. In accordance with the open meeting law, this meeting is being livestreamed and will be available online. And just a reminder that everybody's opinion, whether it's the B R A, whether it's the community, everything is advisory. We will take the testimony that we hear under consideration before we make a decision. This requires that you be as explicit as possible about your concerns about the project. We would like to know what, if you are speaking either in favor and opposition, what precisely is, is your concern or what you're supporting? And that requires that you not repeat what somebody prior to you has said. Please, when you are up here, give us new information. Mr. Ehrlich will be chairing the rest of the meeting, so go ahead, Mr. Ehrlich.
Good morning. First order of business will be to consider the minutes from April 25th. Motion to approve.
I do have one comment, I'd like to... I did not see anything on three Brigham.
That will be added. That was a four second. I will be adding that.
So does that mean... You have the chair.
So what I would, in that case, what I would suggest we do is that we, there's a motion to approve the minutes, but that with proviso that, that the, that we review the text provided with respect to three Brigham later on for additional approval. Given that, is there...
Second.
There's a second, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so order. Following the extensions.
Do you want, excuse me, Matt, Mr. Chair, do you want, do you want to be the secretary? Do you want me to be the secretary?
You do it.
Okay, thank you. I'll be calling extensions, calling case B O A 475-010-148 Chestnut Hill Avenue. Name and address for the record, please.
Attorney Jim Hefner of Rich May, representing Companyland Farms. Address is 176 Federal Street, Boston, here before the decision made by this board in the summer of 2015 to grant a series of variances for my client's redevelopment of the gas station and convenience store located at 148 Chestnut Hill Avenue. That decision had a proviso that we go before the design review process at B R A, now Boston Planning and Development. We've been working with Alexa Pennard, and over time, actually, the number one issue was building color. We heard loud and clear that white was not the preferred color, but since that was a marketing color, part of their marketing campaign, it took some time to get some decision-making authority on change. We have agreed to darker shaded color, which we are down to the final details with B R A and the design review approval. The construction manager for my client is already being in touch with the I S D and fire department, but we're running against time. The decision was in August 2015. We set to start construction September of this year, which would be over two years from that decision, and we anticipate completion by February 2018 pending weather.
Should we looking at a year extension or a six-month extension?
One-year extension would be great.
Make a motion for a one-year extension.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you, have a good day.
For extension, calling B Z C 32973, 27 to 29 H Street.
And, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I would use myself on the involvement of the project.
Is H Street here? Is H Street here? Oh, we'll hold that one. I guess Mr. Pasani could stay. Call the next case, calling B O A 447-559-117 St. Petal Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Arthur Cho, 1 Billings Road, Quincy, Mass. Architect for the project. This project was originally approved and they had agreement from the condo association to go forward. Since the process started, there's been some changes in their approval, so my client is negotiating with his fellow condo members to gain approval.
So one-year extension, fun? Make a motion for a one-year extension.
Second.
Any comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Calling the last extension, calling B Z C 33444, 108 to 108 Dorchester Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning. Dennis Pulte, Attorney General Pulte Miller, representing the property owner with me, Ted Tolukey, and the project architect. Good morning. We were before you almost a year ago to seek a one-year extension. We have unfortunately not been able to accommodate all the work that needed to be done in that time. We probably should have asked for two when we arrived before you, the person who just purchased the property. Mr. Tolukey can tell you that we are now in a position to actually file before the end of this deadline, but we thought it wise to ask permission in the event that there are any glitches between now and that filing date. We're ready to go with architect, engineers, project is ready to go, but again, as I suggested, we're although ready to file before the expiration date, we want to be certain that we don't run out of time.
Make a motion. For a one-year extension.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All opposed.
Thank you.
Did H Street walk in? Is H Street here now? Well, we'll hold that one until later. This is board final arbiter, calling B Z C 330-5517 Court Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Pam Wiley, 17 Court Street.
Do you want to explain the circumstances, please?
Yes, so this is the New England Center in Home for Veterans Project, which is just at the back door, and the appeal was granted, or zoning variance was granted in 2013, which changed the occupancy. And the occupancy count has changed since then. We were talking about 35 permanent new units of housing. We're now talking about 37. We had 59 S R Os. We now have 60, and we were anticipating 180 transitional housing units, and we now have 216. So we would like to have the, we have a, the architect has done an occupancy load, and that was part of the package, so we'd like to have the new occupancy count confirmed.
Is, are the changes as a result of downsizing all of the individual units, or is there more space?
No, there was, we just used more space, and they're, they're supported by the programs that exist, so it was just a reconfiguration of the space.
And the variance, what was it initially? It's 216 now, proposed, what was it initially?
It was 185 to 190.
Any questions on the board?
Are there any revised drawings to show that?
There are.
And we have...
Well, I think they're here. That package was given to I S D.
You don't have any with you?
I only have the, the S R O floor, the S R O floors, because I understood that the drawings would be here. I can get you drawings.
In that case...
The architect has issued drawings for every floor showing the occupancy load for that floor.
The board doesn't have them, I don't know where they are. So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'd like to make a motion to grant the relief requested pending receipt and signature of the drawings.
Second.
Second.
Is it possible those drawings are here?
And this, okay.
This motion and a second. All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. So make sure that, please follow the track of the plan to make sure that they get to the board.
In other words, we won't sign off on it until the drawings are made.
Right, so where do I deliver the drawings?
Counsel. Counsel.
Mr. Chair, just, counsel is letting me know that H Street will not be able to come here, but they are looking for a one-year extension. I don't know if Mr. Pasani wants to step down.
I, I, I will step down.
Okay.
Do you know anything about the circumstances of the request?
I don't. Matt, you want to?
I don't. I just spoke to John once, I'm sorry. I spoke into the applicant, made him aware this morning that he can't be here, so I'm not, I really don't have any more details.
Do they know when the, when the relief expired?
Yes, I can pull it.
I can.
I mean, is it possible just to put it off till the next session?
It was in 2000, January 2014.
So the relief has expired, so how can they ask for an extension?
Well, the board approved it originally on November 26th of 2013.
Okay. And then they came in for an extension on 14, so the relief is a two-year relief, so it's expired, so I'm going to make a motion for denial.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I'm opposed.
Well, I only heard one voice say aye, so I'll ask again. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All opposed?
I'm opposed.
Okay, motion passes.
So we call the 9:30 hearings. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals for 9:30? Address, counsel.
Good morning. 265 Webster Street.
Give me two seconds to pull it up here. Calling B O A 692-071-265 Webster Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Richard Lins, 1216 Bennington Street. On behalf of the petitioner, this matter is for a vertical addition for an existing four-unit building. There is some question as to the legal occupancy of the building. We are satisfied that it is a four-unit building, however, we've agreed at the request of the mayor's office to take a brief deferral to satisfy a few questions from abutters as to the number of units that are actually existing and what's being proposed.
Counsel, just so you know, we're into July, so that won't be brief.
Relatively brief.
Is there a motion?
Motion for the deferral.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Date of July 25th.
Thank you.
Address, counsel.
Hi, Patrick Mahoney, business address of 350 West Broadway.
Address, I got to call it to the record before you go there, Pat.
202 M Street.
Give me two seconds here.
Last one.
202 M Street?
We'd like to withdraw.
202 M Street?
Yes.
Okay, for the record, calling B O A 690-588-202 M Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Patrick Mahoney of Adams &amp; Maranti with the business address of 350 West Broadway.
And your request is for a withdrawal?
Withdrawal, yep.
Make a motion for denial without prejudice.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor? All opposed?
Okay, I have a request for a deferral as well.
What address, please?
231 Gold Street.
For the record, calling B O A 668-415-231 Gold Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Patrick Mahoney, Adams &amp; Maranti, business address of 350 West Broadway. We're seeking a brief deferral of something that came up this morning. We think I can resolve it very quickly.
It doesn't sound like there are brief deferrals.
As I said to the previous counsel, we're into July, we have one.
July it is.
Okay.
Be July 25th. Make a motion for a deferral.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for the 9:30 cases? Hearing none, I'll call the first case of the day. Calling B O A 689-739-213 Eagle Street. This is to demolish an existing two-family structure, combine adjoining lots at 213 Eagle into one new lot, erecting a fully sprinkled seven-unit building with five parking spaces with the new combined lot. The violation is Article 53, Section 8. Seven units is forbidden in a three-family sub-district. Article 53, Section 56, insufficient proposed parking. Twelve spaces required. Article 53, Section 9, insufficient lot size, 7,000 square feet required. Article 53, Section 9, insufficient rear yard setback of 30 feet is required. Article 53, Section 9, insufficient open space, 2,100 square required. Article 53, Section 9, excessive F A R, 1.1 is, 1.0 is the max. Article 53, Section 9, number of allowed stories exceeded, it's three stories max. Article 53, Section 9, height is excessive, 35 feet max. Name and address for the record, please.
Attorney Diane Modica, 24 Haynes Street, East Boston, Massachusetts. And with me is Mark Sangiolo, who is the architect for the project. To my right and to my left is Eric Dina Cola, and far right is Nick Earls, who are the principals of the 213 East Eagle Street LLC.
Want to drive the traffic light, please?
With five parking spaces, this seven-unit...
Can you, please close the door in the back, we can't hear anything up here. Sorry.
This seven-unit, four-story, fully sprinkled building with five parking spaces received overwhelming community support, including the Eagle Hill Civic Association and our elected officials. It is one of the largest lots on the street. It's 6,250 square feet with a combination of two lots, and there is an existing two-family which is in a really deteriorated condition, which will be demolished, and that seems to be the most prudent move in terms of that. There are, we, there are five parking spaces for the seven units. We gave up two parking spaces because there were four old-growth trees in the rear yard of this property, and meeting with the abutters and with the Eagle Hill Civic Association, they were very concerned about the removal of those trees, so what we're doing is we're maintaining two of those old-growth trees, which have very large canopies and provide a lot of, you know, benefits for the community and certainly a visual screen between the property and White Street, which is elevated above this street. In addition to that, obviously, you've heard me before, there are many other options in East Boston for alternate modes of transportation, and there's many off-street parking driveways on this section of East Eagle Street, so that's going to mitigate any parking problems. In addition, we attended six community meetings. That was with the abutters and with the Eagle Hill Civic Association, and we made substantial concessions, which included reducing the number of units from originally nine to seven. We also redesigned the building because we had a more contemporary style, and they were very concerned that we maintained the historic aspect of the community, which Eagle Hill is, and so we changed the design of it so that it's, it has mansard roof, it has bays, and it will have clapboard siding, so there are a lot of benefits there that people were very happy with. We also reduced the massing of the building, pulling in the rear, pulling in the sides. Again, the trees were retained, and there's a very extensive landscaping proposal that will enhance that space. They were very, very pleased with that. So in, in conclusion, and we do have the architect here for any questions you might have, we believe that this is a proposal that really deserves your approval. It will add additional housing units to the community and will really upgrade the street and obviously provide off-street parking that's substantial.
Any questions on the board?
Can you tell me a little bit about the combination of bedrooms in the building?
Yes, there are three two-bedroom units and four three-bedroom units, and the square footage is range from 948 to 1,222. The one, the one unit on the ground floor could easily be made ADA compliant.
Are these for sale or rental?
A sale.
Would anybody like to speak in favor of the project?
Committee members of the board, let it go here from the mayor's office of neighborhood services, would like to go and require and support this proposal. They work closely with the abutters and also the Eagle Hill Civic Association. Thank you.
The head of state, the head of city council, the head of the mayor's office, since we have been through the community process, the council wishes strong record and support.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? Is there a motion?
A motion to approve with continued BPDA design review.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All opposed.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Calling, calling B O A 687-534-167 Coleridge Street. This is to erect a two-unit residential dwelling, the existing building to be razed. Violation is Article 53, Section 56, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the insufficient side yard setback, seven feet is the minimum required. Article 53, Section 9, insufficient lot size, 4,000 square feet is required. Article 53, Section 9, insufficient lot width, 40 feet is the minimum required. Article 53, Section 9, excessive F A R, .8 is the max. The architect shows .82. Article 53, Section 9, insufficient lot frontage. Article 53, Section 9, number of stories allowed has been exceeded, two and a half stories is the maximum allowed. And Article 53, Section 9, insufficient use of open space, 700 square feet unit is required. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Richard Lins, 1216 Bennington Street, East Boston. On behalf of the petitioner, with me is Derek Rubinoff, who is the architect for the project. To his right is Brad Young, who is the owner of this property. As the, as the secretary had mentioned, this is a proposal to raise an existing two-story single-family dwelling in the Orient Heights section of East Boston. Our proposal is to replace that with a two, or three-story, two and a half story, depending on how you look at it, two-family dwelling with similar setbacks as to, as to what presently exists for the existing structure. This is intended to be ultimately home ownership. Mr. Young will occupy the upper level, and eventually this will become two condominium units where the lower level will be sold off. We did have an opportunity to present this at three community meetings, two before the newly-formed Harborview Neighborhood Association and one with the director of abutters. We received support from the Harborview Neighborhood Association and general support from the abutters. This will obviously remove an eyesore in that particular neighborhood and replace it with good-quality housing for, for that area. I can review quickly, the unit sizes are roughly around between 960 and 990 square feet each or two bedrooms. The relief that's necessary is based mostly upon the existing conditions. This is a 2F 4,000 district. The minimum lot size requirement for a two-family presently is 4,000 square feet. The existing size of this lot is 2,500 square feet. Accordingly, we require a variance, although the size of the lot is not changing. In addition, under the 2F 4,000 regulations, you require 40 feet of frontage. Existing condition is 25 feet. We're not reducing the size of the lot, the existing condition will remain, and we request a variance for that as well. In addition, that would require a variance for lot width, similarly to the lot frontage. With respect to the side yard, the existing conditions presently are 1.1 and 2.5 feet. The 2F 4,000 district requires a seven-foot setback on each side. I would point out the existing building is presently set at those setbacks that, that we're proposing for the new building, so we're not increasing the nonconformity any further than what presently exists today. So, but we do require a variance in order to reconstruct the building for that. We do comply with rear yard and front yard based upon the modal setback and the rear yard a 40-foot requirement. The floor-to-area ratio is a modest amount over the minimum, or the maximum amount required for the 2F 4,000 is 80 percent. We're at 82 percent. The open space, although we are somewhat deficient, we think based upon the proximity of the Boston Harbor directly behind this property, it's pretty consistent with the amount of open space that's provided for a lot of these properties in that area. The height of the building, although we do exceed the number of stories based upon the design, we are within the height limit set in the 2F 4,000, which is 35 feet. I would point out the reason for the height of this is that we do sit in the flood hazard zone, so there is a requirement that we have the habitable space above the base flood elevation, and that's one of the reasons for the design of lifting the house up to the point where we're showing. The parking required is one space per unit. This is an existing single-family, so we would only be required to add an additional parking space for the additional unit. We did explore this with the neighborhood as to whether or not a garage at the lower level would make sense. The neighborhood actually preferred no additional curb cut and had no issue with the parking variance that we're requesting. Happy to answer any questions on the board.
So, given that the basement level is not a garage, it's to be used for what?
Storage.
Strictly storage.
Strictly storage.
Sure, but, first on, are you not tearing down the building and re...
Oh, no, we're tearing, full demolition of the building.
Okay, it's on the second base, it's complete rehab.
Oh, I, my apologies, yeah. So tear it down if it exists.
On either, no windows on either the side elevation?
So there is an opportunity to have windows on one side elevation where we are stepping the building back to the compliant requirement of a three-foot setback, minimum three-foot setback to the rear of the building, but where the building sits in close proximity to the property line, there'll be no windows.
And the rear stairs, it's a spiral, is there a view?
Yes.
Any questions on the board? Anyone here to speak in favor of the project?
Committee members of the board, let it go here from the mayor's office of neighborhood services, would like to go and require and support. They worked with the abutters who are supporting this proposal. Thank you.
The head of state, the head of city council, the head of the mayor's office, since we have been through the community process, the council wishes strong record and support.
I have chairman members of the board, Paul Sullivan. On behalf of the council, Michael Flaherty, council, like to go and record and support.
Anyone here to speak in opposition? Questions on the board?
I'll make a motion to approve with continued BPDA design review.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? You're all set.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Calling B O A 687-529-254 Everett Street. This is to combine parcels and erect a four-unit residential dwelling with two parking spaces. The violation is Article 53, Section 54, screening and buffering, none is proposed. Article 53, Section 8, the M F R is forbidden in a 3F sub-district. Article 53, Section 9, excessive F A R, 1.0 is the max. Article 53, Section 9, building height is excessive, 35 feet is the max. Article 53, Section 9, number of stories is exceeded, three stories is the max. Article 53, Section 9, insufficient open space per unit, 300 square feet a unit is required. Article 53, Section 9, insufficient side yard setback, 2.5 feet is minimum. Article 53, Section 9, insufficient rear yard setback, 10.5 feet is minimum required. And Article 53, Section 56, insufficient proposed parking. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Richard Lins, 1216 Bennington Street, East Boston. On behalf of the petitioner, with me is Trey Alareya, who's Joy Street Design, she's the architect of this project. Mr. Chairman, this project proposes to combine two existing vacant lots in the Jeffries Point section of East Boston and propose a four-unit dwelling with two parking spaces. These would be intended as condominiums and included as part of a rehab project for the existing three-family next door that's owned by the petitioner as well. We did have an opportunity to present this to the Jeffries Point Neighborhood Association at four meetings. We worked very closely with the abutters on design and features and made a number of modifications based upon input that we heard from the neighborhood. With respect to the relief that we require, this is a 3F 2,000 district. These are buildable lots in their own right, under the 3F 2,000 dimensional requirements. The only reason I would suggest that these lots have probably never been built on previously is they were subject to a deed restriction by the Massachusetts Board Authority for the last 35 years, or 36 years. Those restrictions have all been overturned based on a land court case that have permitted all of these properties to be buildable, most of which lie within the Jeffries Point neighborhood. The neighborhood recognizes and certainly supported the concept of development, especially because of the size of the units. We're not proposing something that is, you know, much similar to what, you know, what is being proposed presently in Jeffries Point by size. These would be a bit more affordable than the two- and three-bedroom units that are being proposed elsewhere in the neighborhood. With respect to the zoning relief that's necessary, because this is a 3F, four units would require relief for an M F R, multi-family residential. We are proposing a lot area of 1,573 square feet combined. The minimum lot size would be a minimum 4,000 square feet. We do meet the lot width and lot frontage, however, the side yard based upon the fact this is a corner lot would be somewhat of a challenge, depending on how you measured it. If you wanted to have the frontage along Everett Court, we would meet the side yard requirement, however, if that's designated as the rear yard, we would be deficient in that regard, but that's usually a very typical violation that we see on corner lots, depending upon how the, the house is oriented. We do meet the requirement for the modal setback, and as I mentioned, the rear yard would, would not be in compliance. The total floor-to-area ratio is 1.8, the maximum is 1.0 in the 3F 2,000 district. I would submit that the 1.8 is consistent with the density and size of a lot of the homes in the area, and we did have an opportunity to work, again, with the neighborhood on trying to reduce the amount of total square footage in the building at their request. We don't meet the requirement for open space, again, because this building will take up most of the proposed lot. We do have some outdoor space for each of the units, some decks that are proposed, and we would exceed the height requirement that's for the 3F 2,000, the number of stories being four stories, where, where the 3F 2,000 permits three. Again, this would be located in the flood plain, and therefore, any building that's going to be constructed would have to be above the base flood elevation, and it's very common at this point in the Jeffries Point neighborhood to see buildings where we're not allowed to have the livable space at the grade level. For parking, we are proposing two spaces because we have four units. This would require a total of six spaces. Again, Jeffries Point Neighborhood Association has been pretty receptive to not providing as much parking as possible on the site. They are actually much more favorable to seeing projects being developed with less parking on site, so they have no objection to the number of parking spaces we're proposing. As for the unit sizes, a total of four units ranging from 565 square feet for studio up to 850 square feet for two bedrooms, and we feel that those were very responsive to the neighborhood and the number of, the size of the units that the neighborhood wanted to see. Happy to answer any questions from the board.
I do have one question. It's more an architectural one. How do you provide accessibility to the floor?
We have some extra space near the entrance that we are showing as an empty room, but the idea is that if we wanted to frame it out for a future lift, it could be accessed. The first, the second-floor unit above could be accessed through the use of a lift in that designated area.
How are the drawings, Mr. Pizzani?
Drawings are adequate.
I have two questions related to parking. Where, in the proposed plans, will parking be off of Everett Court or Everett Street?
So, the original proposal was to come off of Everett Court. The director Butter was concerned about that. We agreed and with community input, moved it on to Everett. We were concerned about creating an extra curb cut, or at least being able to provide closure of a curb cut on Everett and add on-street parking. The neighborhood didn't have much of an objection with leaving the curb cut on Everett Street. In addition, we've agreed to some mitigation along Everett Court with the director Butters to provide some screening and buffering on their property, including putting some protective devices so that vehicles are traveling down Everett Court, they're not crashing into the house.
So, which is the view from Everett Street?
The south elevation?
So, this... Yeah, that's Everett Street.
Is that a garage, a garage door that's there, or what is it? How would the garage be accessed?
On Everett Street.
On Everett Street.
With the garage door.
There's a person in front of, on the elevation, the person in front of it, that's the garage door? Is this the...
No, there's, the entrance is the brown, and then the gray is the garage door on the right.
And is the lot currently used for ancillary parking or accessory parking?
Always the first question I ask. It is not. We did the research with respect to the adjoining property, and there is no, I guess, qualified parking for the three-family. It's sort of convenience parking for that building. My understanding is historically that lot has been used not just for the three-family, for other people who have rented spaces there. And the neighborhood fully understands that there's not an ancillary relationship between the three-family and the parking lot.
What was the deed restriction that Massport had on the...
I'm going to be a little bit of an expert on this one. In the 1970s, Massport had, part of their divestiture program, sold off a lot of lots in and around Jeffries Point that they owned. We believe they may have retained those for purposes of potential future airport expansion. When they had sold those off to Butters in the area, they did a very similar to the Cities of Butters Lots Program, and included with that was a no-build restriction on any of the lots. Back in 2007, 2008, there was litigation relative to two of the lots, and litigation was decided favorably in favor of the lot owner as opposed to Massport, where the land court determined that the lots, the restrictions were no longer enforceable, and therefore, the lots were buildable, subject to zoning, of course.
Is anyone here to speak in favor of the project?
Madam Chairman, members of the board, Clonie Coeur from the mayor's office of neighborhood services, who would like to go on record and support their work closely with the Butters in regards to the design, garage entrance, let's keep in. Also, the Jeffries Point Neighborhood Association voted to support this proposal.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, you have the council's sale on my team's office. The council wishes to be recorded and support.
Anyone here to speak in opposition? What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion for approval, BPDA design review.
Second.
All votes in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Calling BOA 674-629, 99 Summer Street. This is to change occupancy by adding a takeout food service on the first-floor lobby area. The violation is Article 8, Section .07. 36 egg takeout is a conditional use. Name and address for the record, please.
Marilyn Stickler-Gulston, Astor's 400 Atlantic Avenue, Council for 99 Summer Owner LLC. 99 Summer Street is a office building in the financial district. It's in the B-10 zone, and as such, takeout restaurant is a conditional use. The lobby of the building is being renovated by the owner, and the building has the lobby that goes through, from Summer Street to Kingston Street, and as such, it's an appropriate location. With me is John Soenstreet from Rock Hill Management, and he has renderings of the area and can show them to you if you would so like.
Okay. How are the drawings, Mr. Pizzani?
The drawings are adequate.
What is the name of the restaurant?
It's going to be a grab-and-go cafe operated by a professional management company established here in the city.
Is this company head on the takeout restaurants in the city?
Yes, and I have with me the chief financial officer of Variano Group, Malcolm Wolf.
We operate, Malcolm Wolf from the Variano Group, we operate three cafes currently. One is at 177 Huntington in the lobby of the building. We operate one at Bon Marina Park Drive on the Seaport, and we have a cafe at Northeastern University in their new science building.
Okay, so you're familiar with all the takeout procedures?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Is anyone here to speak in favor of the project?
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Allison, mayor's office of neighborhood services. On behalf of Danny Ching, we'd like to go on record and support. This is consistent with other uses in this area. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Lauren Miller, councillor Bill Linehan's office. We too would like to go on record and support. Thank you.
And we also have a letter from the business improvement district, which...
Is anyone here to speak in opposition? What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion for approval?
Second.
All votes in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Calling BOA 681-082, 31 Milford Street. This is add extension to a family room at the rear lower level, an additional 108 square foot of space. Violation is Article 32, Section 9, G-Cod enforcement. Article 64, Section 9, townhouse, rowhouse, extensions into rear yard. And Article 64, Section 9, floor-to-area ratio is excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Mark Lacasse, 75 Arlington Street, Boston, Mass. Attorney for the homeowner, Amit Desai, who's with me on my left.
Okay, shall we handle the G-Cod issues first?
Sure. Actually, this case was before you for the entire project in September of 2016, at which time the G-Cod was previously approved, and I have a copy of the letter from BWSC and confirmed with Christian Simonelli that the G-Cod is unchanged based on this very minor addition that's before you today.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Christian Simonelli, Boston Groundwater Trust, and he is correct, this system was approved on September, this past September 13th. The system is already in place. There's a minor substantive change to this address, but the recharge system has already been installed, so they have met the requirement.
So, the remaining matter before you today, members of the board, is the enclosure of the space below the rear deck, and the handout that I've given you shows the elevation at the garden level, and the proposal is to simply enclose the area below the deck at the parlor level, which is not before you and has already been approved. Enclose that area to provide an additional 108 square feet of living space at the garden level. The second page of the handout is a proposed rendering of what the French doors will look like below the deck at the parlor level with the windows above, which is part of the parlor level as well. This requires a conditional use permit under Article 64, Section 9, because we're adding more than 50 square feet, and also requires a variance for excessive floor area ratio because we're slightly over the maximum FAR, which is 2.0. The lot size is 1,560 square feet, so the maximum FAR is 3,120. The existing house is 3,160, and with the addition, the total is 3,268, or a 3.4 percent overage on the FAR. So, those are the conditional use and the variance of the two items that are before you. I have 11 letters of support that we've gathered from various Butters that I'd like to submit for the record, including Mr. Roland Barron, who is at 33 Milford Street and is here today as well.
Mr. Pizzani, how are the drawings?
Drawings are adequate. Was the roof deck approved under the previous application?
It was. The roof deck and the G-Cod were the two items which were part of the previous hearing in September of 2016. Yes.
And access is through hatch?
Yes.
How far from the rear of the building will the new addition come out?
Yes, so the new deck is six feet, which is the maximum that's allowed, and the new addition simply mirrors the exact footprint of the six-foot extension. Exactly. Yep. So, the enclosure is co-terminous with the footprint of the deck.
Any other questions from the board? Is anyone here to speak in favor of the project?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Sam Chambers, mayor's office of neighborhood services. We'd like to go on record and support. We did hold in a Butters meeting, and like the advocate has said, both my office and other elected official offices have received the 11 letters of support from the Butters, so we would like to go on record and support. Thank you.
My name is Roland Barron. I'm at 33 Milford Street, and I'm speaking in support because I see no adverse effects on my property.
Is anyone here to speak in opposition?
Madam Chair and the board, my name's Joe Rondinelli, at 29 Milford Street, unit number one. I am in a Butter where the addition affects my property the most. I sent a letter to the board dated April 10th and April 12th. Does the board have that information?
Could you just summarize with public testimony of your opposition?
Will do. It is actually 66 square feet of wall that's perpendicular to my unit, which consists of two floors. There will be an effect of both light and air flow into that unit. The adjacent garden, which I showed some pictures to, is a really important space to my living space that I use frequently. Last spring and last summer, due to the construction, that was not possible. Additional construction affecting that property will also impede my use of it. Because the property abuts our property directly, staging will have to be put into our property and therefore disrupt the use of the garden again. And it's, as I said initially, it's an extremely important space to us. We had some earlier issues that Inspector Odom was very helpful in navigating us through, and we just would like the construction, this additional construction, not to add any additional disruption to our property. Thank you.
And we do have your letter, sir.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any questions from the board? What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion for approval, BPDA design review from the record.
Second.
All votes in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Calling BOA 659-702, 86 to 88 North Washington Street. This is direct a new hotel building. The violation is Article 32, Section 9, G-Cod enforcement. Article 46, Section 11, R Street loading insufficient. Article 46, Section 6, floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 46, Section 6, the height is excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Bernadette Shadray Jr., Shadray and Shadray, 31 State Street, Boston, Mass. 02109. I'm here today with LIMAC, representing LIMAC LLC, Mr. Tom McKay, who is the manager and developer of the project, as well as Haral Pandia from CBT Architects. This is a project that is existing on a vacant parking lot with an old gas station on it on the corner of North Washington Street and Valenti Way. It's been the subject of approximately 10 community and public hearings on the process. We, the plan that was originally submitted under which the denial letter was issued from ISD is different than the plan you have before you today, and we'd like to, I believe, Mr. Pizzani has the plans in full form. These are 11-by-17s. It is a culmination of the 10 meetings that we've had out in the community and the public meetings, in which we have reduced the height of the building. We've reduced the number of keys from 74 to 68. The height has been reduced from 144 to 128, and we've reduced the gross square footage from 38,849 to 36,013. The lot size is a very, very small lot. It is the definition of an odd-shaped lot. There are six sides to this lot. It is an extremely difficult lot within the area. It is surrounded by buildings that are of similar size and massing. We have also received and produced from Davi Engineering the groundwater approval letter, which we understand has been approved, and that is one of the issues that's before the board right now. The, I think a picture's worth a thousand words, so I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Pandia from CBT Architects to bring you through the architecture and design.
Yeah. Before you start doing that, why don't we just deal with the groundwater issue, Christian?
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Christian Simonelli, Groundwater Trust. We do have the no-harm letter from the proponent, and they are in compliance.
We don't have anything.
Counselor, I might have missed this, but how many rooms in this hotel?
There's going to be 68 keys, 68 rooms.
68.
Right, it's down from the 74 on the original application.
How do your zoning violations change? Do anything, does anything...
No, there's still, the same zoning violations exist.
I don't know if this is the best way or best format, but if you can't see, the site is currently located, as Bud mentioned, here at the corner of North Washington and Valenti. It is a, it is a very lighted site as it is currently. I think the issue here is we're really trying to create an urbanistic way to complete the corner. It is sort of the missing tooth between the Beverly that's being constructed right now and the rest of the city wall that's, you know, neighboring the north end. So, we saw it as an opportunity to really urbanistically complete the corner, create a little, much safer opportunity on the sidewalk. Once we develop that corner, we'll sort of clean up pieces of that sidewalk, but really here is to create, you know, an urbanistic completion. So, here's the ground floor plan. That's right here. So, you can see here, this is the natural sightline of the site specifics, and we'll be using the ground floor for the lobby, and the lobby's going to be a very transparent material. I'll come back to the rendering in a second. But if you all blast, it'll actually have a much safer approach to the corner. You can actually see across, it won't be a solid corner. And then, as you go up, this will be a tall lobby, and then the second story will also be tall. But what this allows us to do, because as Bud mentioned, it's a very small and constricted site, we're going to be having a five-foot overhang, so we can actually have rooms above, because given the size of the site, it's a, it's a pretty challenging footprint to have. So, once we're above 20 feet in the air, we're going to have a five-foot overhang that allows us to actually begin having all the different room layouts going up for the rest of the, for the rest of the hotel to 128 feet, as Bud mentioned. So, this is a non-food service hotel. It's an amen to the less hotel, essentially. So, the idea here is there's going to be maybe potentially a small cafe, or at least gathering or conference opportunity here, but it's really more an offering for the hotel that is public, if people want to come up into it. But, and then when you get to the top, as Bud mentioned, we had a pretty significant reduction of the mechanical penthouse. It's going to be a lot bigger. We reduced significantly, and we've dropped the building pretty dramatically. The, this was the old height that was there. This just shows you the dramatic reduction of bringing it down to sort of be a little bit more responsive, not only to the folks at the meetings, but also into the, of the context in the area. Again, this was the before. Again, trying to keep within heights of its surroundings, but we ended up, as you can see, dropping it. So, the reduction here was through the use of floor-to-floor drops between each floor, so we try to maintain the count of the rooms.
How did you accomplish the floor drop?
So, we essentially reduced the floor-to-floor height by approximately, I think it was like 68 inches. Okay, was it more than that? That was enabled us essentially to lose a floor. So, here's the views. You can see here, this was the reduction that we had of the mechanical penthouse. The goal here is to be very responsive to not only the north-end neighborhoods, we're using some warm terracotta tones as far as a portion of it, but yet also be mindful of the fact that it's a modern building, so it's a mixture between glass curtain wall... So, it's a mixture between glass curtain wall, a terracotta along the side, I'll come back to the rendering, and also the use of metal panel. We're also being very conscious of the fact that this is a very punched-window neighborhood as far as the north end is concerned. So, we wanted to make sure that the windows, in a way, are very responsive to the neighborhood. So, in the lower part of the building, they're very punched in scale. And then as you go up, you actually become figure-of-figure opening because you have pretty fantastic views from that, from that location. And again, you can see here all the multiple issues. I think it's in your packet as well, all the components that are there on the sidewalk that we're gonna be looking to improve as a part of, as a part of this development project. There'll be some signage on the building, as well as on the canopy. So, we're trying to create that opportunity with the canopy and overhang. That should create a nice, sort of safer area that'll be underneath the walk and the arrival of the front door. I'll just refer back to the rendering here. So, you can see here, this is sort of the warm terracotta tone. This'll be the nice sort of lit beacon components as you're walking down on the greenway or towards the north end. You'll be able to see a really nice sort of warm and welcoming entry piece. This is the general massing of the building itself. As I mentioned, the more dense windows here, and getting to be a little more less dense as we go up to get larger views of, considering this is a reduced one-hundred-and-twenty-eight height. And again, just to reiterate, this is in hopes of urbanistically completing the corner, sort of, you know, create that infill-missing-tooth component of a pretty, at a very blighted sight.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Dali, have the drawings, have the drawings?
Drawings are, jury.
One question. Can you speak to the off-street loading requirements? Where will loading occur?
If we can show the site later, there is a building under construction or in the beginning of construction to the left of our building on Valenti Way. And that the...
So, that building's being built here, and there a loading dock is here.
Is there, and it's gonna, we're gonna share that space for a loading dock with them.
Thanks to the Beverly.
So, is there an agreement, a signed agreement between the two parties?
No, actually, the loading is on the street right now.
I see, okay. So, neither building has off-street loading?
Well, the building has a drive-through into a garage, but we understand that the loading is gonna be on Valenti Way. And if I can, I'd like to hand out the Howardstein Hudson transportation memo. Sufficient copies. And while we're doing it, also a picture that I'd like to discuss in regards to the height issue and the view issue, which was brought up at community meetings. The, in addition, I'd like to point out that the Department of Environmental Department has issued a demolition permit. There is a building on that, a very small building that we think, and my memory doesn't go back that far, was, I think, a gas station there, but I think it was. That would be demolished. It's a very small building. We also have gone through Article eighty, Small Project Review, and received approval from the BRA, which was subject to many community meetings as well. The concept of this lot is that there were, this one, were very many curb cuts and driveways in and out. It was used for parking for events at the TD Garden. And the traffic was in conflict with rush hour traffic in the evening, whenever there was an event. And at the end of the event, obviously, the cars had to leave. So, that this corner was people coming in and out, both pedestrians and vehicles, all in the same very important corner. What we propose to do is take away all of the driveways off of the site so that there will be no curb cuts, no driveways. And also, through the transportation plan, which is being in coordination with a greater transportation plan for the area, to redo this whole area, is to allow for a cut-in lane that would allow the traffic to flow much better than the existing. In addition, excuse me, there is going to be a park, a city park, further down off of the site. And this will allow people now to be able to traverse the road in a much safer way with no curb cuts coming out onto them and cars coming in and out. We believe that the transportation is being done in such a way that it coordinates with the greater transportation plan that's also being done by Howardstein Hudson for the City of Boston. It's just gonna greatly improve the pedestrian traffic down in that area, which was one of the community concerns. The other community concern was about, that we heard from a limited source, was the impact on the view of this building, given a building over on Causeway Street. And the two-page pictorial handout that I handed you indicates that when you look at the surrounding sites, One Canal Street is a hundred-and-forty feet high. The Morano, which is the building next to us, is being built, is a hundred-and-fifty-eight foot high. And Seventy-seven North Washington Street, the old Scotch and Surloin building, is seventy, a hundred-and-thirty feet high. And we're at about a hundred-and-twenty-eight feet. So, if you look at these pictures, we tried to have a perspective done by which you look at the site, and it's particularly the second page, I think, that is most helpful, which shows the Causeway Street property as it would be viewed down towards the Customs Tower. And the first one is the Customs Tower with a longer shot view of those buildings. And according to all the engineering we can perform, this building will not impact anybody's sight in any direction, given that the Morano is at a hundred-and-fifty-eight feet next to us. And the Scotch and Surloin is across North Washington Street at already a hundred-and-twenty-eight feet. So, I'm sorry, a hundred-and-thirty feet. So, that this building will have no negative impact, as far as we can determine, based upon real engineering on anybody's sightline. We have accomplished that by reducing the size of the building in the headhouse on the building.
All right, are there any questions from the Board? Would you like to speak in favor of the project?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Maria Lanza, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support. The proponent has completed a full community process with over ten community meetings. And during this community process, has worked with their abutters and neighbors in the west end and the north end on making changes to the project that we feel that we can support at this time. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, members of the Board, Phil Cohen, coming downstairs from the BPDA. This project underwent a very extensive public review process. They filed on May thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen, and their comment period ended on February third of two thousand and seventeen. Our Board approved this project, and our planners and designers really appreciated filling in this missing part of the street. So, I'd like to be here in support of this project. Thank you so much.
Madam Chairman, members of the Board, Julia, and City Councilwoman Sal. I'm a team as arts. Council feels the site has been an eyesore for a long time. He feels it's an appropriate use at this location. And he has no negative impact on any residents in the north end. Therefore, it wishes to be recorded as promised.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, Paul Sullivan. On behalf of City Council Outlaw, Michael Flaherty. Council would like to acknowledge that there is both support and opposition on both sides of this project. Having said that, echoing the sentiments of the Mayor's Office, as well as District Council, Council would like to go on record in support.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Minor Perez, representing the Carpenters Union. On behalf of the hundreds of members that live and work throughout the City of Boston, we'd like to go on record in support of this project.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Jay Walsh, on behalf of the Downtown North Association. We'd like to be recorded in support. Thank you.
Anybody like to speak in opposition?
Good morning, Vincent Pisagno, on behalf of my clients Christine Savage and Michael Doniger, who reside at Strata two-thirty-four condominium at two-thirty-four Causeway Street. I would note that oppositions have also been filed with the Board from the North End Waterfront Residents Association, the West End Civic Association. There's been a petition from other owners of Strata two-thirty-four condominium. And perhaps most importantly, a letter of opposition has been filed today from the Massachusetts Organization of State Engineers and Scientists, Moses for short, who own the property located on the fifth floor of the direct-to-butter at North Washington, ninety North Washington Street. In short, with all due respect, this project is a bad idea and a bad location at a bad time. The relief they seek today is not for minor variations from the maximum requirements for development allowed by the Boston Zoning Code, but they want a forty percent increase in the height allowance. They want a massing, the FAR, to be three times the maximum required. And they want a height that is three times higher than the adjoining building at nine North Washington Street. I note that in our, in our letter, the cases say quite clearly that in order to get a variance, there has to be hardship. And there's a balance between the hardship to the owner and the impact on the neighborhood. If you look at those two particular requirements, they don't even come close to meeting the requirements for variance. As far as hardship, as I understand the proponent's argument, they say they want to build a hotel, and it will be a hardship not to allow variances. Well, that is the standard for variance. The standard for variance, is there any economic useful use for the property? The economic use of that property is only limited by the imagination of the proponent. There are many, many uses for the property, other than a fourteen-story, sixty-eight-room micro hotel. When you compare that with the impact on the community, which you're required to do, you can see that the balance isn't, again, isn't even close. Let's start with traffic. The traffic in the area, as admitted by the proponent, is incredibly tight now. My client at Strata two-thirty-four has to deal with at least eighty event nights at TD Garden. On those event nights, the BPD has configured the traffic in a way that the only way to get to Strata on those nights is down Valenti Way. The only way to get there is making a left-hand turn off of North Washington Street. That, right now, is an incredibly congested undertaking. If we're gonna put a micro hotel, sixty-eight hotel rooms on that corner, reducing the Valenti Way access by one, by one lane, that will further exacerbate the only way to drive to Strata on event nights. So, traffic, I would contend, is going to be a disaster with this very intense site. As far as parking, there's absolutely no provision for parking in the plan. They talk about valet parking, but there's no discussion about what that means, valet parking. As far as architectural consistency, there's a five-foot jut that comes out over the street. That's something that's unique in the neighborhood, and maybe that's not fatal. But it certainly is different than what the city has so far imposed upon the neighborhood as far as maintaining the unique character of the, of the north-end community. Lastly, with regard to the direct-to-butter at ninety North Washington Street, there's a roof deck on the top of that building. That roof deck is gonna be rendered almost useless by the erection of an abutting fourteen-story building. At a minimum, there'll be no way to access and view the city as a favorite thing to do now. With regard to Moses in particular, they're on the fifth floor of ninety North Washington Street. That five-foot jut is gonna come out right in front of their window. They lose any air and light that they get now from the city-side view of that building. That's another drastic impact. And lastly, there, lastly, there is an advertising billboard on the roof of ninety North Washington Street. The value of that billboard will be diminished almost to nothing if you put up a fourteen-story building next to it. We respectfully request that the variance, the extreme variance requested be denied.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else? And if you're gonna be repeating the same things we've heard those in detail, go ahead.
I will try not to repeat, sir. This is my first time before you're aboard. I have some letters that my counsel has prepared. I'm across the street...
Name and reference.
Excuse me, Daniel Wolfe, one-oh-five North Washington Street. I'm across the street from this proposed building. I have a four-and-a-half-story building, apartment building on the top two floors, three floors of office down below, parking lot next to it. This building is gonna create huge bulk across from what is generally a fifty-five to sixty-foot streetscape. I know it's in a different zone, but it creates a huge change. The FAR, as been pointed out, is a huge increase. But more important to me is the parking, the, and the traffic situation. The traffic situation is extremely difficult. When you come out of the tunnel, come out of the expressway, you have to make a U-turn, basically, onto Valenti Way and head back into town. That is always jammed up. It doesn't matter whether it's a night of a garden event or five o'clock rush hour. It's impossible for me to get out of the parking lot that I have at ninety-nine North Washington Street. So, I'm very concerned about that. I'm extremely concerned about the pedestrian parking when you cross, pedestrian access, when you cross from Thatcher Street onto Valenti Way to go to the North Station T-stop. They are proposing to put a cut-in for car drop-off. There'll be no place for people to walk across the street. Right now, you can walk across the street, there's a traffic light, there's a parking light. The existing lot, yes, it's used for a parking, but maybe it's eight or ten cars at garden nights. That's all. The construction parking, I don't know where they're gonna put construction. They say that they're gonna do it, but right now, that lot is full of construction from the material that's being placed in the lot behind them. So, the construction, the pedestrian access, the traffic are issues that need to be dealt with. And in that manner, I am opposed to this project as it presently exists.
Anybody else? For the opponents, just a couple of questions. There is no parking, you've got sixty-eight rooms. What is your, how, what's your expectation of how people are gonna find us?
This actually is a business-driven hotel. It's a boutique-sized hotel with rooms approximately two-hundred and something square feet. It is going to be commuter, basically, use from business people coming in through the airport, using the hotel and leaving. We also anticipate that during the weekends, that it would be used by local residents for family and friends that come in. So, the amount of vehicular traffic, based upon the report, which will be valet parked, according to the Howardstein Hudson plan that you have, is a negative impact upon, there is no difference between what exists there now and what will happen with the hotel.
Okay, my second question, the, I understand the facade of the building goes up and then out. What is the, what's the relationship of the line of the extended facade and the street?
It's not into the street, it's only over the sidewalk.
How far into the sidewalk?
Five feet.
What is the width of the sidewalk at that point?
About ten feet.
So, you've got five feet setback from the street. All right, any questions to the Board?
I might just add, we have to go to Public Improvement Commission for that, so that would be subject to another process.
Okay. With respect to the variances that have come before us, is there a motion for the Board?
I'm gonna make a motion to approve with BPDA design review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you very much.
Calling BOA six-nine-zero-six-seven-six, one-sixty-six Newbury Street. This is a change of occupancy from two stores, three apartments, to two stores and six apartments. A full interior renovation on floors two to four to create five one-bedroom apartments and one studio apartment. The existing floors, garden, level, and floor one are currently occupied by commercial retail space. There'll be no changes. The violation is Article thirteen, Section one, usable open space is insufficient. Article twenty-three, Section one, insufficient off-street parking. And Article thirty-two, Section four, G-card applicability. Do substantially rehabilitate any structure. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the Board. My name is George Moransey. I'm an attorney with the business address of three-fifty West Broadway in South Boston. I represent Urban Meritage LLC, the owners of the property, at one-sixty-six Newbury Street. I am joined this morning by Stephen Stachewski, who is Director of Construction for... I am joined this morning by Stephen Stachewski, who is Director of Construction for Urban Meritage. Mr., Mr. Chairman, members, this has a G-card component. I assume that the board would like to address that first?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Christian Seminelli, Groundwater Trust. We have the approval letter from Water and Sewer, and they are in compliance.
We have the letter as well.
With that being done, Chairman, members, this is an application for essentially an apartment fit out for an existing residential building at 166 Newbury Street. This is a building with a garden-level first floor and three stories of residential above. The garden level and the first floor currently house commercial uses, and there will be no changes made on either the garden floor level or the first floor level. Above the commercial uses, there are currently three residential units. The floor space of these units is approximately in the 1,200 to 1,300 square foot range. The application contemplates essentially a gutting and complete updating of the residential space and subdividing the existing three, six units into three units, of which five would be one-bedroom units, one would be a studio. The sizes of the resulting units would be one-bedrooms in the range of about 600-plus square feet and a smaller studio of a few hundred square feet.
I'm sorry, the studios are?
The, the single studio, which is a few hundred square feet. Plans that I have actually don't dimension them, but the existing floor plans are 1,200 to 1,300 square feet. On the second and third floor, I'm sorry, the third and fourth floor levels, they are being cut in half, essentially. On the, on the first floor level, I'm sorry, the second floor level, the first residential floor, a portion of the, the right rear of the building is actually part of the commercial unit below. The result is that would be a, a studio unit, slightly smaller than the 600 square, plus square feet one-bedroom units. In terms of zoning violations, there are two. There is a cited insufficient usable open space violation and insufficient off-street parking. The building currently has two parking spaces in the rear. There's no way to add parking, clearly. The off-street parking requirements under the relevant zoning, which is B-365, is .6 spaces per unit, so an additional two spaces would be required. This is Newbury Street in the Back Bay. If there ever were a location to encourage alternative modes of transportation besides private motor vehicle ownership, this would be it. And I think that that was a driving force in the fact that the Neighborhood Association of the Back Bay, in fact, voted not to oppose this application, and I have submitted a copy of the NAB letter to the board. As I mentioned, the other violation is insufficient usable open space. 50 square feet per dwelling unit is required under the code. There is no proposal here to add any open space. It's impossible on the site. It would only be possible with something like roof decks or balconies, but that's something that, that wasn't even contemplated because of the potential impacts and concerns that arise from that sort of usable open space. With that, I'll take any questions that members may have.
Mr. Fazani, how are the drawings?
The drawings are adequate.
Any questions to the board? Anyone here to speak in favor of the project?
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Allison, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, on behalf of Giselle Guerrero, we'd like to go on record and support. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone here to speak in? Are you speaking in support?
Yes. Lauren Miller, Madam Chair, members of the board, Councilor Bill Linehan's office. We two wish to go on record and support.
Okay. Anyone here to speak in opposition?
I'm going to make a motion to approve with BPDA design review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Calling the next two cases, calling BOA 676-20202, 73 Mount Vernon Street. There's also building code. This is to build in addition to the third floor of an existing building to match exactly as the first and second floors and renovate existing FAR areas on the building interior and create new living spaces. Violation is Article 13, Section 13-1, reconfiguring of space for the basement and the proposed addition creates an excessive FAR. Article 13, Section 13-1, the new addition at the rear of the side yard setback is violation. Article 13, Section 13-1, the new addition at the rear is a rear yard setback violation. This is for building code. Calling BOA 676-203-73, Mount Vernon Street. Eighth addition of 780 CMR Chapter 30, elevators and conveying systems, and 3001.1, 524 CMR governs the design, construction, installation, alteration, and repair of elevators and conveying systems and their components. Build in addition to the third floor of an existing building to match exactly the first and second floors and renovate the existing FARs. Name and address for the record, please.
Bruce Daniel, I'm an attorney, 80 Loring Road, Weston, Mass., representing the developer. David Daniel.
Name and address.
And I live at 123 Narragansett Ave. in Warwick, Rhode Island.
Okay. Why don't we deal with the building code, Mr. Fazani?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the violation of building code has to do with an unobstructed access to the elevator machine room that is located on the roof. We presently have a staircase to, to the roof, but the top portion of it goes through the upper unit of the building. And this is a, this is considered to be not unobstructed because it goes through the unit. We have, we have reconfigured the exterior of the building by extending the fire escape, which is a staircase, to the roof of the building that provides access to the roof and staircase into the elevator machine room. So, we have resolved the code issue. We do not have, with this approval of a staircase, do not have a violation of--
So, you don't need building code relief?
Correct.
Take a motion to deny building code.
Second.
All of the favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. So, that's dealt with. Let's talk about the zoning variance.
So, the, the original proposal was to add an addition onto the roof of the L on the second floor of the building. We have met with the neighbors in Beacon Hill, in the Beacon Hill Civic Association, and, and very clearly and unequivocally, they were opposed to the addition. As a result of the opposition, in our meetings with the neighbors, we have redesigned the building and eliminated the addition. And I have given the board a copy of the new plan to, to show the elimination of that.
This, this represents the redesign?
Correct. It shows existing--
There's only one copy.
I beg your pardon?
Did you submit only one copy?
This building originally was 11-unit building. It's legally zoned as 11 units. Now, it was occupied as 11-unit rental building. This application is to reduce the number of units to four that were homeowner, homeownership units. So, we're reducing the density of the neighborhood down to four units instead of 11. Interestingly enough, our meeting with the Beacon Hill Civic Association is the only time, I think, I've ever heard a community meeting say they, they were opposed to reducing the number of units. They wanted more units as opposed to less units. So, at any rate, we, we, because of those concerns, we, we eliminated the, the addition. We also eliminated the proposed Juliet balconies that were on the rear of the building. And in addition, due to ignorance on the part of the contractor, they had, they had vented some heating equipment out the rear of the building that was visible from a public alley, which, which requires Architectural Commission approval. We rerouted those and eliminated those vents, so they're not visible from the street. All that is a result of neighborhood input. So, the, the remaining issues have to do with FAR. The FAR issue is, Beacon Hill is unique, I think, in their requirements on FAR. We are relocating storage and utility rooms in the building to a different, to a different location. That, according to the plan examiner, triggers an FAR violation because utility and storage apparently is not included in the FAR calculation in Beacon Hill. Everywhere else in the city it is, you can move them, it's not a problem, but Beacon Hill, you can't do it. So, this plan basically shows, this is the existing building, and these red-marked areas are the storage and utility areas. We're moving them from here to this proposed plan with storage and utility there. We're not creating any new square footage in the building. In addition to that, we are, we have an existing roof deck that was surrounded by a fence that is rather unsightly. We're proposing to rebuild that roof deck, replace it with, these are pictures with a 42-inch railing that is relatively unobtrusive and matches what is going on in the neighborhood. And with that, I would ask the board approval of this revised plan.
Any questions for the board? How are the drawings presented?
The drawings are adequate. I guess I'm still slightly confused. Is there now no addition at all?
There is a small addition off of the back that's existing, has been there since the building was built.
Is your proposal to do an addition now?
No. There is no addition.
With, when these drawings were revised, have they been shared with anybody?
They have. They, these drawings are a result of the neighborhood input, and I will say unfortunately that they, they were late in getting to us from the architect, and so, but they have been shared via email with the Beacon Hill Civic Association last Saturday, and my understanding is that they were distributed to many members of that organization.
And I too have a couple of questions. First, what is the access to the roof deck? Is that through a hatch?
No, there's a headhouse existing on the building.
Was that a legal, a legal, a legal roof deck?
Yeah. Well, the roof deck is proposed.
Okay, the roof deck is proposed--
Yes.
--with our headhouse. Okay, and--
Well, no, the headhouse is existing.
Okay.
Yes. And, and so, the, the roof deck is proposed.
And tell us about the sizes of units. You may have said these already, but tell us what the sizes of the units are proposed.
The size of the proposed units, I'm sorry, one second, I've got it ready. Unit number one is a duplex unit that incorporates the first and ground floor, and it is approximately 2,978 square feet. Unit number two occupies the second floor. It's 1,623 square feet, two-bedroom unit. Unit number three is, well, I'm sorry, this is, is approximately 1,200 square feet, two-bedroom unit. And unit number four is 2,332 square feet, and that is a three-bedroom unit.
Thank you.
Is there anybody here to speak in favor of this project?
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Allison, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, on behalf of Giselle Guerrero, we'd like to go on record and support. The applicant has met twice with the Civic Association and has made concessions as part of that process, so we'd like to go on record and support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Lauren Miller, City Councilor, Bill Linehan's office. I'd like to echo John Allison at the mayor's office. We two would like to go on record and support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, I guess, Councilor, Michael Flaherty, Council of Local Record and Support.
Is there anyone to speak in opposition? Please come up to the podium, state your name and address.
Hi, members of the board. My name is Sarah Cherry. I'm at 38 Pinkney on one of the Butters. Thank you for, for taking the time to listen to us today. We have numerous concerns about the projects. First, we appreciate the, the deletion of the addition on the L and, and getting that to us. I think, though, there's been numerous instances throughout this process where the developer has agreed to eliminate elements of the redevelopment, only for us to find that those elements have been brought back into the process. So, we would request that any final plans be presented in writing and assurances be provided that no additional work will be added to, to what is approved. I'm also very concerned about the addition of the, the roof deck on the L. Currently, there is a roof deck there. I believe it is not legal, and it does not comply with the required setbacks. The plans that I saw that were circulated on Saturday had the roof deck on the L exceeding, going through the entire footprint. I'm not sure if you were aware, but the space between Mount Vernon and Pinkney Street is approximately three feet. It's very small. The light and air and privacy that's afforded to the residents is very minimal, and the creation and the legalization of a roof deck with a deck which is see-through, while assisting with the light and air significantly and very severely affects the privacy of multiple homeowners. And for that reason, I'm, I'm opposed to the development.
Good morning. Thank you, Madam Chairman, and members of the board, for this opportunity to address you on behalf of the Butters on Pinkney and Mount Vernon Streets. Regarding these proposals, my name is Nancy Adams. My husband, John Burgess, and I live at 40 Pinkney Street, which is almost directly in back of Matt 73 Mount Vernon. And we've been asked to speak with you on behalf of multiple neighbors. I'm the one who asked that the Pinkney Street letter be distributed to you. I'm sorry, I only had five copies. And I took the photo this morning that indicates the depth of shade by the current deck, which goes all the way back to the end of the L, compared with the adjacent garden and buildings where there's full sun this morning. So, I handed that to you. And the concern is partly one of trust, as my neighbor, Ms. Cherry, said, that we were given, again, any, by email, that drawing. It still shows that the deck is extended to the entire back of the L, which is one of our requests that it not be there, that it be set back 20 feet, as multiple other decks in the area are. And so, when we have discussions and things are proposed, if they are not in writing, we find that changes are again made after our discussions. Previously, yes, the third floor, which would have greatly increased the FAR, has now been removed. Everyone's in agreement that has been put in writing. The Juliet balconies, as far as I can see, still are on the drawings, even though we have been told they are to not be put in place. And we don't have any specifics about the roof deck and the size and whether it will be in accordance with zoning codes and applicable setbacks. We also have requested information about the HVAC installations and placement and noise, and we have nothing, again, in writing that assures us that they will not impact the neighbors in the community by noise and placement issues. So, basically, we are asking that somehow there be commitments made in writing to which the developer can be held accountable. And thank you very much for your time.
Anyone else?
Madam Chairman, members of the board, Tom Clement, Beacon Hill Civic Association, Zoning and Licensing Committee. The applicant came to our committee in early March with the original proposal, which included the living space addition on top of the existing two-story L and a roof deck on top of that. There was strong opposition, and this committee and our Board of Directors voted to oppose the original proposal. Since then, the applicant has made significant changes, which we think come a long way to addressing the neighbors' concerns, but I'm still here with the original vote of opposition. However, we believe that if the board-- However, we believe that if the board would satisfy the neighbors with respect to their concerns about the setback of the proposed roof deck, which is also subject, and by the way, there are two roof decks here which are of concern. There's a roof deck proposed for the L at the rear, and there's a roof deck proposed for the high deck, or the high roof of the building. I'm not talking about the high roof of the building, I think, from what I've seen, that that meets the requirements, and I'm sure that the board can assure that. It's the deck on, on top of the two-story L that's of concern, because it extends all the way to the rear lot line of the building, and there's a 20-foot setback requirement in this area, which is important for the protection of the neighbors. So, we think that if the board can get the applicant to honor that 20-foot setback or as close as possible under the circumstances, and agree to the other things that have been stated, the removal of Juliet balconies and appropriate design location of the, of the HVAC, and total elimination of the proposed additional space on top of the L, that the Civic Association would then be in a position to support the proposal. Thank you.
All right, thank you. The applicant want to speak to, oh, also want to speak in opposition? Name and address, if you could try to avoid not repeating what others.
Repeating, right. My name is Sophia Watson, we're an immediate abutter at 75 Mount Vernon Street. We would like to, you know, we're grateful that the changes have been made removing the, the third addition. I would note that the developer actually marketed and from what the listing broker told us, put the penthouse under agreement, assuming a third addition, a third level addition, so that's sort of how this relationship got started. So, I think the neighborhood saw that and thought, oh, gosh, and that's why you, you feel this sense that we need the trust and we need to have whatever the developer agrees to in writing after this meeting. We do also agree that the deck in the back should be pulled back 20 feet. We have a deck in the back of our building that's pulled back 20 feet, that was, the deck on our building was built before we purchased it and went through permitting, and that's why it's 20 feet back. The deck that they have in existence now in the back of 73, from what we can tell, did not, was put up without a permit, and that's probably why it goes to the, to the extent of that L. So, we, we do request that that be pulled back in line with everybody else in, in the back of Mount Vernon Street. And that is, that's all we, that's all we have to say. Thank you.
You want to speak to the issue of the setback?
Yeah, just the, the issue, the problem that we have with the setback is that the deck is part of the egress system for the fire escape, and this existing fire escape stair, which we're going to, this, this is an additional to, to the ground, is, is approximately 12 feet from the rear of the building, is approximately 15 feet from the property line. So, so, in order to maintain egress, we can't move any, any closer than the edge of this fire escape. So, I mean, we're certainly willing, this, this proposal for the exterior has to go to the Architectural Commission, Beacon Hill Architectural Commission as well, we put an application in there for review, we have not had a date set yet, but we can continue this design issue and discussion with, with the neighbors, along with the Architectural Commission, to resolve exactly how far we can move the deck.
I, I do have one question. I'm looking at the original drawings prepared prior to, and I'm trying to see where the existing third level deck is, and I find no notation on his drawings as to deck, I find notations as to roof. Can you help me?
I'm sorry?
Can you help me find where, where, I'm, I'm looking at.
I can, I can show you photographs of the existing deck, I can't speak, I can't explain why he may not have put the existing deck on the plan.
And the issue as to why the deck cannot be cut back, the egress stair or a fire escape goes up to the fire end.
Correct.
Correct, okay. All that you need is a three-foot width.
No, I, I, agreed.
So, you can cut the majority of a deck back if there's one proposed, and again, I don't see in his drawings, I'm looking at construction houses, I don't see him saying that there's a proposed deck here on the third floor.
You, you're talking about a proposed new deck?
Or, or anything.
Well, no, the proposed.
I simply see the, the words roof, and this is a very good object, and I'm sure it wasn't.
His proposed plan, he has the roof deck shown on the proposed plan.
On your roof plan, the one that you submitted, on, on this one?
Well, you're looking for, was there somebody else who wanted to speak? I missed you. Speaking in opposition? Okay, could you come and?
You can speak after he answered. He's in the middle of it, let me see.
No, I.
No, they're trying to find the drawing. Why don't you just speak? Name and address, please don't repeat, but I think we've got an idea what the issues are.
Okay, Chiming Z, 44 Pinkney Street, I'm a direct abutter and on Pinkney Street. The, the problem you're having is the problem we were having, his drawings are very confusing, they change all the time, and there has not been a process on this project. I don't even know when he literally bought the project and started, but we started being aware of him when he started doing excavation work and basically lowering portions of the basement floor. Now, for, for your information, this building was a real neighborhood problem, it was, had a lot of illegal work done, which has been there for quite a while, so some of the problems Mr. Daniels inherited, but what he has done is, he has just proceeded on, on the basis of an, I believe he had a demolition permit or something, and it, the permit kept expanding, and the neighbors were not notified. He didn't notify the neighbors when he started, I think he must have started around June or July, I don't know, but finally, the permit he did produce and showed us, showed him starting in, I believe it was December or something like that, I, he'd already worked on, been working on the project for about three or four months without notifying neighbors. That's an issue for ISD, that they really should have, that when they, when they, when they grant a demolition permit, they need to make sure that the contractors don't keep extending it, et cetera, and certainly that they contact the neighbors. Now, I have a list here of 150 neighbors, and for your sake and our sake, we didn't have them come here, and so I want to put that on the record.
They're all, they're all neighbors that are not with that, that's one of their.
And our biggest problem is that, as you can see, is we're having hard times pinning this developer down, and he comes and you never know what's next, and there's no real fixed point on the, on the drawings, that you can, it's like a moving target. Now, as far as the business of the decks, the deck that he's trying to put back on is illegal, we, there's been no permit on that, a lot of illegal, legal work was done in that building. He says it's 11 units, but of the 11 units, there are a lot of illegal units, he didn't create them, but they were really bad units in the basement, which is probably why he's trying to create some livable space there. What that does is it increases the FAR quite a lot. Now, I don't have the time, and you don't have the time, to calculate the FAR, we don't know, I mean, you'd have to work with existing drawings, which, you know, they're just not accurate, but the point is, we'd like to have this developer behave himself, and he has variances that he's requiring, and there's no hardship. And we'll re, I don't have to tell you what you need to do as a hardship, Mr. Daniels is a lawyer, so he knows. So, what we would like you to do is basically try to help the neighbors make this fellow behave. I have spoken at the mayor's office, I actually spoke to the mayor, so I was a little surprised when the mayor's office representative, who's not here, somebody comes out in favor of him, but that's another issue. That's basically what I'd like to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Fazali?
Wait, one, one more point. Many roof decks go to fire escapes, and the deck doesn't have to go there, you just have a little gate, and you go on top of the roof, and you have little walking pads, so.
That's what Ms. Fazali was pointing out.
Right, I was just, and I was just seconding when Mr.
Ms. Fazali, are, are drawings sufficient to proceed?
Well, the, the issue is that, obviously, I think with my, my questioning, there was a sense that I have a little confusion, because I'm looking at the full set here that was submitted to ISD, and then I'm looking at that which I have the only clock in here that was submitted, and there's enough discrepancy between them. I want to make a motion, in fact, to defer this for the following reasons, that there has to be a set of documents that we can live by. The proposed, for instance, and the proposed deck on the third floor, the egress stairs are not in the same location as they are on the quote, construction set. So, I don't know, this one is stamped by the architect, constructor, I, I tend to give greater credence to a stamp and sign guarding than, like, even though it's prepared by, by the senior firm. Make a motion for a deferral, and I think the deferral should take a little bit of time.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, bunch of carries.
July 25th.
I beg your pardon, if it's at all possible, we're, we're sitting dead in the water in this project, if we can get an earlier date, it would be most helpful.
Unfortunately, Counselor, as I said earlier, it might not have been here, they had some deferrals for 9:30, we're into July right now.
And please admit it, clarified subject.
It's now 11:10, I'm going to call it a 10:30, are there any deferrals or withdrawals for 10:30? Address, please.
44 Mather Street.
For the record, calling BOA 664-792, 448 and 44 Mather Street. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is James Christopher with a business address of 415 Ponce de Avon, Dorchester, we're the project architects. At this time, there's been a couple of mix-ups with notification of community meetings, so we'd like to defer in order to go back to the community and the abutters to clarify the revisions to the plans that we've made.
Would you like to defer, would you defer? Second.
Aye.
All opposed?
July 25th.
Thank you.
Address, please.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, members of the board, my name is.
If you could just give me the address first, Michael.
599 Cambridge Street.
Okay, for the record, calling BOA 646-449, 599 Cambridge Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Michael McCormick, 100 Cambridge Street, Boston, Mass. I represent the, that a BD family who have been at that location for 20 years. The original plan was to take the building down and build a substantial number of condominiums. We went to the ACA, we got approval, and then questions were raised. So, what we'd like to do is go back to the neighborhood and see if we can't work out something where we can get universal support when we come back in here.
Make a motion for a deferral.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay. We also have a date of July 25th.
Great, thank you very much.
Address, John?
16 and 18 Plain Street, Dorchester.
16 and 18?
And 18R, yep.
And 18, 18R, okay, so you have four, four on the docket, well.
Yep.
I'm going to call them all in for the record, calling BOA 676-288, 16 Plain Street, calling BOA 676-285, 18 Plain Street, and BOA 676-289, 18 Plain Street, and BOA 676-291, 18 Raya Plain Street. Name and address for the record, please.
John Folgini, 10 Ford, Spurrier, Braintree, Mass. So, we're requesting a deferral, we've been going through the community process for upwards of a year, and the lot that we're working with is the placement of three single-family houses. We had made different proposals, there's houses in the rear in Rosaria Street, and then there's houses on front on Plain Street, so we just need one more through Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services, with Dave Carter, one more neighborhood meeting to show them the revised plans, and hopefully we'll be, we'll be good to go.
Would you defer? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
We're at August 15th.
Thank you.
Address, please.
130 Mansum Room, in West Baskerville.
I'm sorry, the address again?
130 Mansum Room.
Oh, okay.
What are you looking for here?
Are you, are you deferring?
Yes, you know.
Are you deferring? This is for the 10:30 case, you're in the 9, oh, I'm sorry.
130.
You're sorry, I'm sorry, yeah. Are you deferring?
Uh, I'm trying to figure, I tried to finish my article, you know, the.
Well, we haven't called you yet, are you going to defer it? Are you, are you going to come back?
We did, we have a call.
I'm going to be calling it.
You'll be called and ordered.
This is for 10:30. Are there any other withdrawals for 10:30 or deferrals? Name and number, go to the next case for the 9:30s, calling BOA 643-390, 364 E Street. Is E Street here? Okay. This is a dorm with new deck and hatch, violation of Article 57, Section 22, roof structure restricted district, Article 57, Section 9, required side yard is insufficient, Article 57, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
Brooke Simpson, 364 E Street.
Hi, Justin Masterman, 745 Atlantic, here representing Brooke Simpson, the owner of the property at 364 E Street. We are proposing, or Brooke is proposing, a modest roof deck on her property in South Boston, and has received support, had a neighborhood, not a neighborhood meeting, a abutters meeting with her four closest abutters, received support from those abutters, I have actual support letters from three out of the four. The St. Vincent Neighborhood Association, as a matter of practice, does not hold hearings on proposals if the abutters support the project, so they didn't hold a hearing and support it, but all the abutters came to a hearing, a meeting, and supported the addition of the roof deck. Happy to answer any questions we might have.
Questions for the board? How is this presented?
The drawings are adequate.
We would like to speak in favor of the project.
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Allison, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, we'd like to go on record and support. We did hold an onsite abutters meeting, and there were no objections to the project. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Lauren Miller, City Councilor, Bill Linehan's office, we too wish to go on record and support. Thank you.
Is there anyone here to speak in opposition? Pledge of the board.
Make a motion to approve with PPDA design review.
Do we need that? Do we need design review?
Yes.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Finally, the last case for 9:30, calling BOA 653-861, 19 to 23 Clap Street. This is to erect a new four-story, nine-unit townhouse building with side and rear roof decks, violations Article 65, Section 7, the maximum number of dwelling units allowed in a single structure or in combination of a semi-attached structure shall be three. Article 65, Section 41, our street parking is insufficient. Article 65, Section 41, our street parking facilitate, facilities required by this section 64 shall be provided on the same lot as the main, use of which they are accessory. Article 65, Section 8, townhouses are conditional use. Article 65, additional lot area for additional dwelling unit is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 65, number of stories is excessive. Article 65, building height is excessive. Article 65, Section 9, usable open space per dwelling unit is insufficient. And Article 65, Section 9, the front yard setback is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board, my name is James Rudser, my office is at 88 Black Falcon Ave. To my right is the architect on the project, Timothy Johnson, and to his right is James Pascal, manager of the applicant Enterprise LLC. Before the board is our request for variances to construct three, three-unit row houses on 19 to 23 Clap Street. If I may, address the issue of the parking, and that is, in conjunction with a matter heard by this board two years ago, my client's property located at 14 Enterprise Street, which abuts this property, was approved for the parking of 19 parking spaces. At that time, nine of them were devoted to a project that he was constructing on Enterprise Street, leaving the remaining nine, the remaining 10 available, and so that this project has 10 parking spaces for it. Next, I would like to address the issue of the fourth floor. You may recall, last year, I was before the board on the issue of the fourth floor with respect to the project on Enterprise Street, where the project was originally presented with a three-story building with a headhouse, the proviso, that the headhouse be eliminated. The proviso that the head house be eliminated was imposed, and I had asked the board to essentially reconsider that and call it a fourth story. In this instance, instead of going that route, we're just flat-out calling it a fourth floor. The footprint of the proposed building is, each of the three buildings is 26 feet wide by 50 feet deep. However, the footprint on the fourth floor, as shown in the plans presented, is only 16 and 1/2 feet wide and 26 feet deep. That fourth floor is likewise recessed from the front facade of the building 11 feet, and therefore won't even be visible from the sidewalk. We have presented this to the neighborhood. The immediate abutter to this project is here to stand in support of it. We would ask the board, should relief be granted, that the same proviso that we had volunteered, as far as notice being put in the condo docs relative to the adjoining commercial use of the property be noted. This is a neighborhood very much in transition. Boston Street is vibrant with commercial properties and residential properties. To the north of this project is the South Bay Development, and together with the planned unit development area. We believe that this proposed project is a nice transition from the substantially larger projects that are in the work to the north of us, and would act as a buffer for the more typically sized buildings on Boston Street.
Howard and Roger.
The drawings are adequate.
Before we take questions to the board, just want to ask Jeff. BPDA seems to have recommended denial in our present summary notes. Is that the case?
That is accurate. Our concern at the time was, it was an issue that has come before this board a few times, that people are piecemailing development, whether it's trying, you know, for whatever reason. But the nine units that are on Enterprise Street, in addition to the nine units that are proposed for Clapp Street, the BPDA is concerned about the lack of affordable housing or IDP payments. Now, with that being said, I know that Mr. Johnson has been in conversations with Jonathan Greeley and Cecilia Nardi about coming to an agreement on the IDP. And I would just like to have them acknowledge that an agreement has been made with BPDA. Otherwise, we would recommend denial, because we believe that this would have to go through Article 80, because we do have documentation of an original proposal on this site for 18 units, and now they have two nine-unit proposals. So, you know, I wasn't privy to those conversations, so I can't speak to any agreements that may or may not have been said, so I'd like to let the appellant go to that.
So, I mean, the reason I wanted to get that on the table first is that we don't look kindly on people trying to game the system and, you know, doing two-nine unit projects once really one is being a problem in order to avoid process for the city and inclusionary counting. So, if you want to speak to that.
If I may, and again, I wasn't privy to any of the conversations that were being reported to the board. I can tell you that this was not some artifice to avoid the affordability component of Article 80. This, again, neighborhood is very much in transition. The property that my client bought it was a 7,000-square-foot warehouse that ran essentially...
15,000.
15,000-foot warehouse that ran from sidewalk to sidewalk between Clapp and Enterprise. The economic viability of erecting an 18-unit project at the time he acquired it was very much in doubt. In the three years that he has owned the project, and again, the two years since this board approved the first of the nine units, the economic viability of the project now suggests that the neighborhood would support that, the development of this kind. My client has had conversations with BPDA about the affordability. I was not privy to them, and therefore I can't address them specifically. But it's not a ruse.
Well, you can make the argument that economic viability is dependent on whether you have to pay it.
Three years ago is when it was uneconomical to contemplate this size of a structure.
So what I don't want to do is go back and forth in this. What I'd like to hear is if there are conversations that are happening, you can enlighten us.
Good morning, Chair, Ms. Chair, and members of the board. My name is Jim Pascal. I'm the owner of the project. We had no intent whatsoever to defer or try to avoid the affordability component whatsoever. It was clearly done as two nine-unit buildings. We didn't seek at the time for 18-year approval. We weren't sure what we were going to do. If there was any intent there involved, it was certainly, we would not have kept it in the same name and wanted to come back here under the same request. So it was absolutely a thought that we were proposing a nine-unit building for financeability, for viability reasons, economic reasons, and of course, now we come back to the board to seek approval for the second phase.
And can you speak to the issue of the conversations about an agreement?
We did have some discussions, and I believe I went back, Ed Lib, last Friday. They made a proposal. They actually, the proposal that was made, they turned back on. They said, "We would agree to do X," and I was okay to have a conversation about that. However, they then said that they wanted more.
So, my question is, I'm sorry, can you jump?
No, John, please.
Is whether this is actually far enough along for us to make a decision. Until I think some of these issues are sorted out, we should perhaps defer this case so that we have complete clarity and complete understanding by all parties on what is happening on this project. So with that, I'll make a motion for deferral.
Second. Comments, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
August 15th.
So we would ask you to please come back with some clarity.
Calling the first case for 10:30, calling BOA 671-857-46 New Market Street.
Are we okay back there with the technical people? Are we good? All right, thank you.
Is New Market Street here? Okay. This is outdoor sales and display of 30 secondhand motor vehicles on their lot. Okay. The violation is Article 90, Section 7, outdoor sales and display of motor vehicles is a conditional use. Name an address for the record, please.
John Gorman, permit consultant, 43 Charles Street, Boston.
George Khalifi.
George, who is a friend of mine, is proposing to put in outdoor sale, sale and display of 30 secondhand motor vehicles. We are requesting a conditional use permit. Currently, the lot at 46 New Market Square is being used as a tow lot with storage of vehicles. This is not much of a departure from what's there. If you look at the photo, photos of what's there right now, it's not the prettiest place in the world, and George is going to improve the looks. And it's going to be sales just in that area outlined in yellow on that lot. We met with New Market Business Association. We have their support. And we request yours.
So...
Mr. Rosario, the site plan is out?
I do have a question. So is this going to be taking up the entire lot or just the portion of the lot?
Just the part outlined in yellow.
Okay.
You can see it says, "Proposed lease line."
Yeah.
And that's...
And what's the rest of the site?
The rest of the site is tow and storage of vehicles.
And so there's enough room left for the towed vehicles?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Would anybody like to speak in support of the project?
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Allison, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, on behalf of Josh McFadden, we'd like to go on record in support. As the proponents indicated, they do have the support of the New Market Business Association. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Joe McGeckman, City Councilor, Frank Baker's office, we'd like to go on record in support.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? We were waiting eagerly. Okay, what is the pleasure of the board?
Motion for approval with BRA, BPDA design review for screening, buffering, and fencing as recommended by them in their notice to us.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Calling BOA 675-434-2111, Green Street. This is to erect a new six-story mixed-use building with internal mezzanine, five stories, wood frame over one story of steel, to be erected on consolidated parcels. The building will have a parking garage in retail use on the ground floor, and there will be 45 residential units on the upper floors. Violation of Article 55, Section 19, use of regulations in a local industrial, industrial, multifamily dwelling is forbidden. Article 55, Section 19, accessory parking is forbidden. Article 55, Section 20, floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 55, Section 20, height is excessive. Article 55, Section 20, usable open space is insufficient. Article 55, rear yard is insufficient. Article 55, Section 40, off-street parking is insufficient. And Article 55, Section 40, off-street loading is insufficient. Name an address for the record, please.
Good morning, members of the board, Madam Chair. My name is Mike Ross.
Can I just interrupt you a second? Typically, if someone is going to take photographs, we ask, they request permission to do so for the chair.
Oh, that's okay.
Before you take your...
My name is Helen Matthews. I'm an independent videographer, and I would love to report this.
Okay. As long as nobody else has any objection, okay. But just so you'll know for the future, you should let us know in advance, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, my name is Mike Ross, I'm attorney of Prince Lobel. I am joined by my colleague, my clients, Boston Community Ventures, meeting with the principal, Mordecai Levin, his colleague, Terry Bruce, our architect, Deb Katz of ISA, and her colleague, Lily, who's somewhere here. Our team's been working on a project located at 211 Green Street or 3353 Washington Street in Jamaica Plain for the past two years and two months. Currently, it's an underutilized parcel with topographical conditions, specifically a compromised topsoil condition, which are specific to this project. Our goal is to upgrade the current use and build a mixed-use project with 45 residential units, 24 parking spaces, and ground floor retail. In order to achieve the reasonable use of this land, we have set a minimum variances, we have a set of minimum variances, which are actually listed on the first page of the packets that we've handed out to you. During our permitting process, as you probably know, the BPDA was engaged in a planning process called JP Rocks, and as you can see in the zoning chart that we provided, just as a way to illustrate, we also included a line of what the JP Rocks ultimate zoning we anticipate, and how the new building will line up with those guidelines. And as you can see, they line up fairly significantly. I mentioned we've been engaged in a community process for over two years, and that time we held over nine community meetings and public meetings where substantial changes occurred in the project. There's a nice graphical representation of those meetings in your packet that kind of go through the various meetings we had. We're really proud of the support we've received. As you know, we were approved by the BPDA on December 15, 2016, and we also have numerous letters of support, which I'd just like to make sure I can submit, just to make doubly sure, I'm just going to hold back one of these letters, just to read one line. And it's from our most, one of our closest residential abutters, Matt Karak, who lives at 8 Union Ave, and he just says, "Me and my wife own a house at 8 Union Ave, which is almost directly abutting the proposed project. We've lived there for 10 years. We just wanted to say that we fully support the project, the proposed development, sorry. Unfortunately, with two young kids and full-time jobs, we are unable regularly to attend development meetings, so our voices and the voices of similarly situated individuals tend not to be heard." So I just, if I could submit those letters for the record. We're happy to present boards here through Deb, but want to just break for a moment to see if the board has any questions.
Can you tell us how the parking is proposed to work?
The parking, you said?
Yep.
Yep, the parking is onsite in the rear of the building with a curb cut, an existing curb cut that comes off of Green Street. That will be, that existing curb cut that comes off of Green Street is our exit. There is a entrance curb cut that is next to that. And so there'll be 22 residential parking spaces, just surface parking, no garage. And there'll be two retail spaces as well for the retail. There's also one loading zone space, but because that loading is not connected directly to the building, we were flagged on that issue of loading.
What is the anticipated retail use?
We're very open to the use. We've been meeting with the Union Ave neighbors. We have promised to come back to them on whoever the use is, but we've promised to do a neighborhood service, something like a green dry cleaner, a small grocer, or possibly some sort of café. And again, we've made a commitment to go back to the Union Ave neighbors with whatever that proposal is. It's not a large site, it's just under 2,000 square feet, but we should be able to put something in there that works.
Could you articulate the number of units, type, size, and what is the percentage of affordable?
Okay, so it's 45 units. Deb will go through the count. I'll just tell you that the percentage of affordable is 7.88. It's, I mean, 17, I'm sorry, 17.88. I dropped a digit. 17.88. If you kind of went through the math of the JP Rocks, you would be required to do 7.66 the day this was before the, but that's not in front of us. Obviously, the current rule will be 13%. We've...
But you're doing the 17.5 or 17?
Yes, it'll be 17.88.
The affordability is two at 70 and six at 50% AMI.
And so the breakdown...
The sizes of the units.
Yeah.
So it's actually included on a sheet in your packet, but we have four studios with a 500-square-foot average. We have 27 one-bedrooms with a 620-square-foot average, and 14 two-bedrooms with a 850-square-foot average. And the range of all of those unit sizes is also included on a sheet in your packet.
I'm not only impressed by the sizes because they're average, so give me the smallest.
Sure, absolutely. So the smallest studio is 500 square feet. The smallest one-bedroom is 585 square feet, and the smallest two-bedroom is 805 square feet.
Who are the drawings?
The drawings are adequate. Terrific.
Are there any other questions for the board? Anybody want to speak in favor of the project?
Mr. Chairman. Madam Chairman, members of the board, John Delzo with the Boston Planning and Development Agency. Given that this project has been brought forth during the JP Rocks planning process, we wanted to avail ourselves to any questions you might have about Plan JP Rocks, but also offer that this proposal very much reflects the vision and the spirit of Plan JP Rocks. It brings much-needed housing and affordable housing to the neighborhood, and it also situates growth near public transit and the Southwest Corridor. As proposed, the project is consistent with the Plan JP Rocks guidelines that were in place at the time, including the affordable housing guidelines.
Could you simply articulate the gain that one gets in terms of height?
The plan...
Because you're up to 68, and you got to 68 because it's allowed under...
Under Plan JP Rocks. So Plan JP Rocks introduces a density bonus by identifying areas where additional height and density is allowed, such as this site. The guideline stipulates for a six-story residential building that the height be 65 feet, and if there is ground floor, commercial, or retail types of uses, that there be an additional five feet. So the guideline for this site would be 70 feet total. So the guideline for this site would be seventy feet total.
Are there other issues that came out of the JP Rocks plan that you think are important for the Board to understand relative to this project?
I think we need to underscore the importance of bringing additional housing to JP and additional affordable housing, that this plan, or this project as proposed, brings deeper or units that are affordable to lower-income individuals is critically important to the neighborhood and the city.
And how do you view that in terms of the numbers?
Excuse me?
How have you viewed that in terms of the numbers, in terms of the affordability of the numbers?
The affordability in this case goes beyond IDP requirements, and I believe, if you could recount the mix of affordable units.
It's eight units altogether. Six are fifty percent of median income, and two are seventy percent of median income. So it's a deeper discount in that regard as well.
And what's, what would be, assuming, if the project is approved, what would be the method of selection? Is there a lottery? What's anticipated?
I'm not sure.
Obviously, there's a lot more demand in Jamaica Plain for affordable units.
A HUD-sponsored lottery, I'm being informed?
Yeah. It would follow the guidelines and the HUD procedure for affordable housing.
These would be deed-restricted affordable units, and they would follow the city's affordable housing lottery system with their housing.
All right, we were at the point where people were going to speak in favor of the project. So go ahead.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Alexandra Valdez, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, and we would like to go on record to support. The project was filed in two thousand and sixteen and approved in December. Plan JP Rocks was approved in March two thousand and seventeen. The project density bonus and mix of affordable housing as recommended. Like said, the project includes six affordable units of fifty percent AMI, and two units of seventy percent AMI. Honor has committed to relocate existing tenants to a new commercial space within the JP neighborhood. The same way that we received a lot of letters of opposition, we also received a lot of letters of support, and we would like to go on record to support.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Minor Perez representing the Carpenter's Union. On behalf of hundreds of members that live and work throughout the city of Boston, we'd like to go on record to support.
Chairman and Board, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Bill Raelt. I own a three-family on twenty-four Canton Road. I've walked by this site many times, and I think that, I just want to express my support for the project. I think it's a very refreshing, dynamic design, and it's forty-five units of housing that we needed yesterday. This project was initially proposed almost two years ago. That's just not the way we're going to meet our housing, our housing needs in this city. And this is housing exactly where we need it, you know, really a block or so from a major, major public investment in transportation. And I would argue that actually this is really underbuilt as proposed for the size of the investment that exists in the orange line, and how we should be capitalizing on that if we want to continue to grow in a sustainable way in this city. I would also say that it's largely reflective of the JP Rocks plan, and, you know, again, I just support it. It's mixed-use, transit-oriented, and I hope you'll approve the project. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Don Wees, head of Nine Park Lane, just up the hill behind this site. Couple of comments about the project. One is, I don't know the proponent, I'm speaking here just as a neighbor. In fact, I'm actually opposite Mike Ross and Mr. Levin on something else, we'll be duking it out. But this is about the project, not about the individual. That's what I'm here to speak about. This project has some personal significance to me. My wife and I moved to Jamaica Plain because we wanted to raise our family in economically and ethnically diverse neighborhood. We've had that experience. Our children have gone through the Curly Kid Eight School, and our older ones now at Boston Land Academy. They're growing up in a very different environment than we did, in the homage of the small towns where we lived. As I look around my neighborhood, though, and I see the average housing price at eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I'm very concerned about what the future of the neighborhood is, because most of the people who can afford to move into JP today are pretty well off. And because this is a neighborhood that energetically fights new development, there's always limited supply, and that means the folks with the biggest checkbooks can buy in. It doesn't have to be that way. If we buy, if we can build a new unit in Jamaica Plain for everyone who wants to live in Jamaica Plain, we won't have displacement, we won't have escalating prices. I would ask the Board to consider what's happened in New York City and San Francisco, where there's been a big push over the last few years to combat rising housing prices and because of the growing populations there by adding to supply. Rents have not only crested, but they've decreased in both of those markets. And we can do the same thing in Jamaica Plain, but it's all about supply. I would just encourage this Board enthusiastically to consider the needs of JP down the road in terms of adding significantly to the housing supply so that we can arrest the escalation in rental growth and house price growth. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, is there anybody here to speak in opposition?
Madam Chair, members of the Board, my name is Andrew Valdez on from the Office of District Six, City Councilor Matt O'Malley. I'd like to go on record in opposition.
My name is Carolyn Royce. I'm nineteen Olmstead Street. I'm really here to remind, in your papers, there is the vote from the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council, which voted nine to three not to support this project. And you also have letters in your file. My main point is that Plan JP Rocks was a very long and strong and opinionated process. That is our planning process that was established for redeveloping the industrial lots in our area. And there were several, like, there's individuals who felt things should be bigger and higher. There's the people, individuals who felt there should be more affordability. But in the end, we came out with a, what we have is our closest-to-our-community statement about how the development should go on the industrial lots. This is one of the projects, it is coming in right as Plan JP Rocks was passed. You can argue the little tiny time loopholes, but the developer was very, very aware of the affordability standards that were coming out of Plan JP Rocks. That was a number-one requirement. And my fear, and the Neighborhood Council also alluded to this, is that if you start chipping away at the guidelines that are in Plan JP Rocks, then what was the point of it? That really establishes our new zoning. We want that higher affordability. That was the trade-off for density. We want those setbacks and step-backs because that's how it fits in with the residential neighborhoods. That is our community statement, and the ZBA allows a developer to start chipping away and, oh, I want this. Oh, in this project, they want the height, but they don't want to meet the affordability. These things are a package deal, and it was a long process from the community to come out with this. There's not total consensus, but it is the closest we have to a community consensus. And I hope the ZBA will ask this developer to go back and work on the affordability issue. That is the number-one issue for me. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a lot of people in line. Say your name, and please try not to repeat what previous people have said.
Sure. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Nichelle Sadler for Councilor Jackson's office, and we'd like to go on record in opposition of this project. Thank you.
Madam Chairman and members of the Board, I'm Jonah Rapinoe. I live at one eighty Green Street, which is right on the same street as this development. I am with the Green Street Renters Association. The development team sitting in front of you has not met with our group and expressing that they see no value in meeting with us about our concerns, mainly having to do with the affordability of this project. We have a petition that has been given over to, it's both online and handwritten petition that is, over five hundred and seventy people have signed this, including thirty people on Green Street itself, are calling for higher affordability in this project. This project as well does not meet the JP Neighborhood Council's longstanding standards of twenty-five percent. You've already heard about Plan JP Rocks. And a final note, the heightened density of this project causes undue burden on the abudders, the community, the transportation infrastructure, the quality of life in my neighborhood without giving back and meeting the affordability requirements. It sets a bad precedent for development to follow and should be denied under its current proposal. Thank you.
Brendan Killian, one twenty-eight Brookside. I'm also a member of the Green Street Renters Association, and just wanted to point out that this project withstands about seventeen percent affordability, takes advantage of the higher height limits in Plan JP Rocks while not representing the twenty-four percent affordability standard. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Susan Pranger. I live at twenty-three Chilcot Place. I chair the Chilcot Granada Neighborhood Association, and I'm also a member of Eggleston Square Neighborhood Association Housing Committee, and a member of the Alliance of Ten Neighborhood Associations in the Plan JP Rocks area that have worked extensively on the plan. I oppose the variance for three reasons. First, the affordability, which other people will talk about. Also, I want to point out that the sixty-eight-foot height really will overpower several existing brick historic buildings on Green Street. And finally, that one of the tenants of the Plan JP Rocks was to support development of Green Street as a neighborhood retail area. And this particular project, what little retail it has, is on Washington Street. Green Street is primarily vehicle entrance, entrance to the building, and at the very corner, a little bit of retail. And so that, that whole stretch of Green Street does not encourage that, promote that retail character between the height and the retail. Thank you.
My name is Elmer Heck, one twenty Brookside Avenue, just around the corner from this project. Despite what's been said here, the project proposal did not meet even the interim guidelines of Plan JP Rocks in December. They can finagle the numbers as much as they like, but the numbers don't match up. This project also doesn't meet the proposed affordability levels that the community requested for deeper affordability in reference to AMI. On top of that, previously, a person speaking in favor of this project said that there's a shortage of housing stock in Jamaica Plain. This particular developer owns tens and hundreds of thousands of square foot of property in Jamaica Plain that have been left dilapidated for decades. This is blockbusting going on silently. He has been depreciating the stock inventory of housing in this neighborhood for decades, and now is trying to cash in on an exploding real estate market, and he's asking you for variances of massive scale that will enable him to cash in on this situation that he and other developers have created over time. And I strongly oppose this project, as do all of my neighbors. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chairman and members of the Board. I'm Marie Turley. I live at thirty-two Union Avenue, Jamaica Plain. The Neighborhood Association abutting the proposed project. I just wanted to know, did you receive the letters from Union Avenue in your packet?
Yes, we did.
And I just want to, you're going to hear a lot about the affordability, and that's, as you know, a key issue to Jamaica Plain, but there've been a few points raised that we would like to respond to. Number one, the one is about the whole issue of the need for affordable housing and whether or not our community supports this new development. We do support development. Sitting here today is Mr. Ryan Tosca, who has taken over a project right on Washington Street, formerly known to many of you as The Chicken Place. And that project had huge community engagement. It was a project that was an aha moment. And so we really do and are currently working with developers in a positive way. With all due respect to Mordecai and his team, before they brought on Michael, and there have been some changes that we articulated in that letter, they basically consistently said to us that they were satisfied with their design and satisfied with their project, despite the fact that at all of the two community, public community meetings, more than the majority of people were there in opposition to heightened density and the failure to address affordability. If it's not in your packet, I would like to point out this slide that was shared with the neighborhood, and if I can pass it to the Board, I only have one. It shows the impact of what a sixty-eight-foot project looks like from the abutting neighborhood of one, two, and three family houses. For those of you who don't remember, this is the Rattler. This is the Orange Line. It ran down Washington Street. It was a great urban experiment to take that down, open up our community, and make it livable. Sixty-eight feet at the highest point is twice the height of the old Orange Line. So basically, what you're doing is taking the Orange Line, putting it back twice as high on the sidewalk, abutting one, two, and three neighborhood housing. So for Union Avenue, we are one of the most diverse streets in Union Ave, in Boston. We are very, very proud of our economic and racial diversity. Our street is made up of one, two, and three-story residential frame buildings. We have two, four, unique four-story buildings at the end of our street, which provide truly affordable single occupancy housing. So what we're really asking today, we don't want Mr. Levin not to develop there. We want him to come back and work with us around the core issues of affordability and density. Not even discussed yet is design. You've heard us reference the fact that our neighborhood actually is historic. There's an overlay on Green Street because of the amazing Mansard roof building that is currently there. There are factors there that we'd like to see better addressed in this design. There are traffic issues around the proposed entrance and exit. Many of you are familiar with Green Street. Many of you ride it. Many of you try to go to Brookside for health care and now have to drive home and park your car and walk because there's no parking. This assumes only twenty-five percent of the residents will own cars, when in fact sixty percent of Boston residents own cars. We need to be having a much more robust conversation about the parking ratio. Yes, it's transit-oriented. It's a marvelous idea. It's a concept, but it is not in reality now. There was no traffic study done under the BPDA planning for JP Rocks, so we really don't have hard information, just anecdotal. We can talk about the process, its reference there. We really want an opportunity to work with this developer, reduce the height, work with us around the strong design that will work, not just for the residents now, but the new people that will come. The housing argument is put forth by the density people who support the height. But in reality, the mayor asked for fifty-three thousand units of housing in fifteen years to address this crisis. Three years in, you've permitted over thirty-seven thousand units on Washington Street alone between Forest Hills and Green today. There are twelve hundred new units either built, in construction, or permitted. We are not closing the doors. We are not rejecting people.
I'm going to ask you a rapid, if you want to have a seminar on urban policy in general, we want you to please focus on the issues.
Right. So I would ask you to support the sixty residents on Union Avenue that signed a petition to the BPDA. The residents will come out and raise these concerns. We urge you to deny this project, send it back to the community with direction. Thank you.
Thank you. And for the subsequent speakers, again, I would just ask that you not repeat points that are made, and made well.
Good morning. My name is Alan Benenfeld at thirty-six Union Avenue. I will try to be brief and not repeat, at least not too much. I strongly echo the comments that Carolyn Royce gave about balance among the various issues. I particularly would like to commend, I realize I'm speaking in opposition, but I would want to point out that I particularly commend the innovative, creative, and thoughtful contemporary design that does not imitate, but rather respects the neighborhood, and it's a much-needed and welcomed approach. The design also, to some extent, cleverly mitigates the massing of the building with its roofline. That said, however, the building is still one story too short for the neighborhood that it lives within. The mezzanine level, which adds to the height, has only one additional room in certain units, and adds very little to the overall living space within the building, and is kind of a conceit that really does, should not have any place here. There are two major issues, I think, that have longer-term consequences. One is certainly on the affordability, because there's been a degree of cherry-picking in terms of what requirements are or not met. The development currently ignores the longstanding JP Neighborhood Council's recommendation for twenty-five percent affordability. And even Plan JP Rocks moves substantially in that direction. The building is three units short, and the current level of affordability is only at fifty percent, and at least some of the units need to be lower at forty percent. The second major item of great impact is the traffic and the patterns of ingress The second major item of great impact is the traffic and the patterns of ingress and egress to the project, which places an undue burden on the neighborhood. The developer mentioned an existing curb cut for egress from the building. Yes, that curb cut exists, but presently, the curb cut does not lead anywhere, and it has not been used in decades, and lies too, much too close to the intersection of Green and Washington. The developer shares an easement with the neighboring property, which is also under design development. There should be a single entry-exit serving both of these properties, which would provide better control and rate of absorption of traffic from these properties into the existing traffic stream on the street. The developer should be encouraged to work with other, the other developer on this particular matter. Perhaps the developers should explore a combined underground garage for both parcels, which would have the added benefit of reading, freeing more space for retail uses, and it would also add more open space, which would serve two very dense developments. Thank you for listening. Thank you.
Can we go over just the issues that we've had so far? So we have affordability, height, blockbusting, parking, and design.
Yes, and traffic, yes. Hi, I'm Rachel Paxton. I'm at forty-eight Union Ave. I'm the Union Ave Neighborhood Association, which abuts the property. I, while I think affordable is a major issue, and they haven't got the twenty-five percent necessary, and height and all, everything, and I want to speak to the character of this particular developer who evicted me and seventy other artists and small businesses in two thousand and one from fifty-nine Amory Street on, in Jamaica Plain, Roxbury, and the artist community in Jamaica Plain has never recovered from that. I ended up having to leave my community of Jamaica Plain for sixteen years. It took me sixteen years to get back to Jamaica Plain. There's now no affordable studio space for artists in Jamaica Plain, and that building has been sitting empty for sixteen years. He's got one corner of it rented to the AIDS Action Committee, but the rest of the whole building is empty. He also currently has several storefronts up on Center Street that have been sitting empty for years. So this is not a developer that should be given any special privileges, in my opinion, at all. And I'm concerned that his retail space on the ground floor of this building is too small to have a grocery store big enough, and that all this new development that's going down Washington Street, all those people, they're not, they don't have cars, because you're all calling it transit-oriented, but there's no grocery store within walking distance of any, any, anywhere near Washington Street right now. And there's three more empty lots or developable lots on Green Street that are being developed or will be developed, and this really sets a bad precedent. If they put what little parking there is on the ground floor instead of underground, then you're not getting enough retail space to have the shopping and all the stuff that everybody needs here. And Green Street is already overcrowded. It's two lanes, but you can barely get by sometimes, and I've actually seen the tractor-trailer truck pulled up on the sidewalk in front of the Korean Market on the store unloading once a week, which I don't see how you're going to get all those pedestrians going to the T, which barely works, our broken-down T, and then there's not enough cars and enough parking, so they're going to be parking all over where they can find, which is nowhere, and trying to drive up to Center Street to shop, because there's not enough shopping. So that's, the, the height and density, if you're not giving us the affordable with the height, don't give us the heightened density. It's ruining our neighborhood, and don't give it to this developer.
Okay, thank you. I, this, I, we have a lot more cases today, and I understand the passion here, but people really need to be thoughtful about the use of time.
With that in mind, my name is Dick Monks. I live at twenty-six Pointon Street. I've lived there for about forty-five years. And I'll not add to the list that you've been compiling, but I, I'm concerned about the cynicism this is going to raise. Many, many, many youth, as well as adults, were involved in this process. They're now seeing the very first project, the ink's not dry, on the BP Plan, JP Rocks Plan, and it's going the other way. My concern is for the future of activism. If we dampen it, where do we go? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is David Minot. I'm at one sixty-six Terrace Street, which is a little over a mile away, but I'm also an artist who's living in a live-work space that's under threat. I initially can thank the BRA, under its old name, for that space, but the developer win has a timeline on it, which we were not informed of until we were literally putting pen to paper, when we were in touch with the developer for seven years about these spaces. So I don't want to see something similar occur here. And I also understand the, with the affordability issue, twenty-five to fifty percent of residents in the area who need affordable housing cannot afford housing that is deemed affordable by the city. So we feel as though we're being short-changed by both the mayor's office in supporting this and the re-packaged BRA in supporting it as well. And we want to see this issue, which everyone, and I'm sure you will agree, is a basic human right, housing honored and not driven under by market forces, and not, thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Zoning Board of Appeal, Neighbors, Neighborhood Office, Office of Neighborhood Services, pardon me. My name is Helen Matthews. I live at one eighty Green Street, which is a few doors down from the site of the proposed development. I, I want to express that the project, while it's requesting many large variances around height and density, it, those variances are not justified by the minimal level of affordability in the project. So there's, there's, of course, an impact that you've heard around the, the infrastructure and the quality of life due to the heightened density that they're seeking, that, again, is not justified by merely seventeen point eight percent affordability. Our, our neighborhood has been very clearly asking for projects that align with the affordability in Plan JP Rocks and with the longstanding standards of our neighborhood council. Our neighborhood is home to an exceptionally diverse group of residents. Many other Jamaica Plain residents and I support development without displacement. And greater affordability at Mordecai Levin's proposed thirty-three fifty-three Washington Street development is needed in order to protect and preserve the racial and economic diversity of our, of our neighborhood. So I want to say that unfortunately, you all have a decision in your hands this afternoon that I think could go one of two ways. If you decide to approve these variances, I think you may be very much risking driving a deeper wedge between the Zoning Board of Appeals and the BPDA, and our neighbor, our Alliance of Neighborhood Associations, and our, our Neighborhood Council. If you, if you vote to deny these variances, you will be standing with the neighborhood and helping to, to heal some of that distance that's, that's, that's been growing. So I hope that you do the right thing and stand with our neighborhood, and I hope that you ask that this developer come back to the neighborhood and work out a project that truly benefits the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, there was a lot of things that were brought up in the course of this testimony. Craig listed most of the major issues that went there. And I would ask the, the phone briefly to respond to some of those issues.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just for the record, I'd like to submit a traffic analysis prepared by Conley Associates, our engineer, who reviewed the traffic conditions, and we provided that to our community. Just want to correct the record on a couple of items. There, there is no displacement with this project. There's no residential housing within this existing project. It's comprised of office units where we have, I believe, on every single one, or at least four out of five of these existing tenants, we went and found new spaces for them to move to. And within our letters of support are actually, I mean, real written letters by our tenants saying that they appreciate what Morty Levin has done. In terms of affordability, I, I think it's critical to point out, when we went to the BPDA on December fifteenth, two thousand and sixteen, this project, this project absolutely met the guideline for affordability. It was thirteen percent of the first one-point-oh FAR, this is a three-point-oh FAR building, and for the remaining two-point-oh, it's twenty percent of the two-point-oh. So that would, that would equal seventeen point six-six. That's how we got there. And it, and we, we took it a step further. First of all, we did seventeen point eight, but then we were, six of those units were fifty percent of median income, and two were seventy. So we overachieved in that regard. Since that point, the JP, the planning documents have even gone further on those affordability, after we were already approved, after our building was set and the agreement with the BPDA was set. And whether or not that actually gets codified, none of us know. And if those projects come in above twenty percent, we'll see if that happens. I can tell you that we have some peer projects that were also approved kind of during this ambiguous time, and we, we are, we're overachieving on affordability, and we're underachieving on massing. So we're not, we're not bigger than the other buildings that were approved during this period, and we're not less on the affordable front. Also, I'll just point out, the JP Neighborhood Council, at the zoning committee hearing, they could not get a vote against us, which I thought was quite a statement. In the end, they did decide to submit a letter of opposition as, as their prerogative, but we walked away from that zoning committee hearing without a vote of support or a vote of opposition. Couldn't come to a vote. It was, it was a split room, is what I'm trying to say. There are other items that came out. I mean, in terms of design, Deb Katz was awarded an unbuilt award, and for the Philadelphia, for this very building. It's a spectacular building. It wraps the entire building, not just the front, but the entire building, with premium materials. We listened to the community. The back of the building is radically different. The, the, the substantial decreases were, had, had been, you know, setbacks and two-foot height, height reductions, fewer units were all part of our compromises. We've worked hard. We wanted to get there with some of our neighbors. We tried hard. I think you might have even heard that in some of the comments, that there was still some support, even though they were opposing. That's because we have tried hard. And, and the final point, um, yeah, I mean, I would just, oh, and then we, we didn't refuse to meet with anyone. We, in fact, the, the person who made that statement, I personally was in a meeting with.
We're all interested in that.
I'd like to, I'd like to make a comment about the blockbusting, certainly. First of all, we have, we do not have any retail units. I, I'm sorry, we do not have any residential units. All of our properties that we control are all commercial units. There are two vacancies on Center Street, but this is in a climate of changing retail. We have tenants that have been our tenants for over twenty years. We have a number of nonprofit tenants, including AIDS Action Committee, Justice Resource Associates. We have.
Okay, I think we're trying to deal with the merits and problems with this project. And, and I would, that's our charge.
So the point is that the block, they've conflated the blockbusting.
Okay, all right. Give us credit. Okay, any questions from the board?
I'm going to make a motion to approve with BPDA design review.
Second.
All votes in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I'm opposed.
Thank you.
Take a break for a second.
Yeah, uh, some of the board members would like to. Okay, we'll, we'll take a five-minute break.
So I just want to make sure we're all on the same page here. Case BOA six-nine-four-eight-six-five forty-three thirty-seven to forty-three forty-one Washington Street. This is to remove the proviso and to add a takeout as a provision to the new owner. Violation's Article Six, Section Four. Other protectional conditions are required. Name and address for the record, please.
Hey, La Herrera, forty-three thirty-seven A, Washington Street, Rosendale, Mass.
Okay, could you describe what your proposal?
Um, I'm just basically trying to remove the proviso in order to get my own takeout, because we just transferred ownership. Nothing has changed within the restaurant. Everything stayed the same, and we've been granted a temporary license, but the ten ten Mass Avenue has told me that we need to do this procedure. We went to a community meeting. Everybody approved it, and the city councilman as well, for the city of Rosendale, and everybody supports me and the neighborhood as well.
Okay, Mr. Vazari, would you go ahead and look at your address?
Roger, I can.
What's the name of the restaurant?
Last Panma's Restaurant.
And you have experience doing takeout in the city?
Yes.
Yeah, where?
Um, well, not in the city, but I've been in this place since September, so I have an idea. You know, we've been working with a temporary license of the.
So just get, get clarification from the mayor's office.
Okay.
Okay, is, uh, can anyone speak in favor of this, the applicant?
Um, Daniel Murphy was here earlier. I believe he stepped out, because he told me it was a long list. I'm not sure.
Anybody from the mayor's office want to pitch in?
I'm terribly sorry. On behalf of Dan Murphy, I would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Walchap White, Councilor Tim McCarthy's office would like to go on record to support.
I'm chairman of the board, Paul Sullivan. Vice Mayor Counsel, Michael Flaherty. Counselors do on record.
Anybody here in opposition to their motion to the board?
Motion to approve. With BPDA design review.
Second.
No, no, no.
Screen and buffer, nothing?
Nope.
Great.
Do you have grades on your building?
Um, no.
No?
No pull-down grades?
Oh, yes, we do. I'm sorry. Actually, yeah, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I'll take BPDA design review as my motion put forward. Thank you.
All right. And then the second?
Second.
All votes in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? With that, proviso.
So before we go into the next case, we are going to call the eleven-thirty hearings. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals for eleven-thirty? Niles, up to, address, please? Thirty-three thirty-nine?
Thirty-three thirty-nine Ward Street.
For, for the record, calling BOA five-two-six-six-zero-three, thirty-three to thirty-nine Ward Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Niles Sutcliffe for the record, one eighty, one ninety-seven Eighth Street in Charlestown, Mass. I am here requesting that the board grant one, hopefully, one final deferral on this project. We are finally at the point where the civic association, BPDA, and our clients are coming close now to an agreement to finalize the project. The only thing is, we will need some additional time to get through the BPDA Board of Directors. We also need an additional neighborhood meeting, which will be BPDA-sponsored, and so.
Six months, Warren?
Like to suggest that we, if you grant the deferral, and I'm asking you to do so, is to schedule that for some time in July.
All right, is there a motion from the board?
Motion to, how, how much time do you need, Niles?
Motion for deferral.
Second.
I'd say about two and a half months.
Well, okay.
You're going to get August for that.
Motion for deferral, and a second. All votes in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, Mark?
August twenty-ninth.
Thank you.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for eleven-thirty? Deferrals for eleven-thirty, okay. Hearing none, go to the next case. Calling BOA six-eight-eight-three-two-six-forty-seven Sargent Street. This is a rec, a new six-unit multifamily residential dwelling with six R Street parking, exterior deck and roof deck. The violation's Article Fifty, Section Twenty-nine. Lot area is insufficient. Article Fifty, Section Twenty-nine, additional lot area is insufficient. Article Fifty, Section Twenty-nine, floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article Fifty, Section Twenty-nine, building height is excessive. Article Fifty, Section Twenty-nine, side yacht is insufficient. Article Fifty, Section Twenty- Article Fifty, Section Twenty-nine, rear yacht is insufficient. Article Fifty, Section Forty-four dash two, point two, conformity of an existing building alignment. In Article Fifty, Section Twenty-eight, a multifamily dwelling is a forbidden use. Name and address for the record, please.
Attorney Daniel McDevitt, Two Granite Avenue in Milton. Uh, with me is Solomon Chowdhury, the Principal of, uh, Shanti-
Shanti Boston LLC.
And the architects are here as well.
From the architect.
Okay, you want to present the project?
Certainly. Uh, my client owns this piece of vacant land in Roxbury, and he's had, uh, a number of discussions with the local neighbors and the, uh, neighborhood association. There is a letter of support from the Greater Hartford Street Neighborhood Association in favor of the project. He also submitted early with, uh, uh, BPDA, and, uh, they have been in favor of his design. When he went to the neighbors, uh, with the, uh, vision of building a building on this lot, they, uh, every time that they talked to him, they said, "We want something where the people that live there will own where they live. We don't want rentals. We want people to have a stake in the community."
Excuse me, uh, counselor, can you please directly go to the violations? That there are quite a number of violations. And, uh, so can you speak to the violations since that's what you're here for this board to address?
Certainly. So, the, the building is, is, uh, as you can see from the drawings, is, uh, relatively consistent in size to what typically would have been six-family houses in Dorchester and Roxbury. Uh, it's, uh, but in order to provide parking underground, uh, which is six parking spaces, the building is raised, uh, slightly above the height limit. Uh, it's not inconsistent with the, uh, uh, the density or floor area ratio of the other homes in the neighborhood. This, this particular neighborhood has a, although it is, uh, three F, five thousand, there are many lots in the proximity of Columbia Road, Quincy Street and Blue Hill Avenue, which kind of square this, this street around, that are, uh, much bigger, much taller and more dense. Uh, so in looking at, uh, what would fit as far as the neighbors, including the people directly next door, which is the condominium association, and they have a letter of support as well, they thought that having six new owners who would take residence and ownership in this neighborhood is what the neighborhood and the street needs. It needs people who are committed to being members of an association and, and living in this area, and that's why they-
Suppli- suppli-
Okay, so, so I'm talking about the variances. Let's be, let's get down to the crossbacks.
Right, so, the, um, the lot area i- is insufficient in that, um, it's, it's under the size that would be needed for six units, but it's, it's actually quite s- either equal to or greater than most of the other lots in the neighborhood. The, um, uh, when, when the building design was looked at by the BPDA, they were in favor of the design and the alignment. So these all came from some, some early reviews by BPDA and the mayor's office and in community meetings. Where do you want to line it up?
So can you please speak to the roof deck, please?
The roof deck?
Okay, so the, the roof deck was added, uh, because it, it was felt that it would give an opportunity for the owners to have outside space.
And is it open to all, all units or just specific unit? And how is, what is the access to that roof deck?
Well, it's open to all, and as you can see from the drawings that are here, there's, there's access from the, the main stairwell that goes up through the building. It goes right up to a headhouse.
So then, that's the question, whether it's headhouse or a hatch?
Well, it's a headhouse. It shows in the front, there's a little bit of a design, uh, in the front, so that the building looks like it has a, a little frontal, uh, decoration point here, and that's the, the effect of headhouse. So the stairs do go up from the sidewalk and they wind all the way up, and they go down the back way as well.
Okay. Mr. Pizani, how are the drawings?
Drawings are adequate.
Okay, um, is there anybody who'd like to speak in favor of the project?
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, John Allison, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. On behalf of Josh McPadden, uh, we'd like to go on record in support. It's our understanding the applicant has the support of the Civic Association. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Nishel Sather for Councilor Jackson's office would also like to go on record in support of the project. Thank you.
Is there anyone here to speak in opposition?
My name is Fredo Nunes. Good morning. I'm a butler next door and in front of the house, and that lot is too small to build there, you know? It's gonna be cluttered inside, people from other street parks there. There's a rest home next door to it, and there's people that come to Butters and contract that come to build two families and three families. Six families around the neighborhood is, is not, you know, long ways, it's far away from it, you know? I think it's a bad idea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, any questions to the board? It's a pleasure to the board.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve with BPDA design review.
Second.
All votes in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay. Calling BOA six-nine-one-five-four-three, one-eighty-six-A, Grampian Way. This is a renovated existing three-family house, raised the roof by three feet and had a rear addition. The violation's Article Nine, Section One. Extending a non-conforming building, a new extension exceeds the twenty-five percent of the existing structure. Article sixty-five, Section Nine, the floor-to-air ratio area is excessive. Article sixty-five, Section Nine, the building height is excessive. And Article sixty-five, Section Nine, the number of stories is excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, Attorney Derek Small, Business Addresser, fifteen Broad Street, Boston, Mass, oh-two-one-oh-nine. With me today is David Gamble, Principal and Owner of Platt Development Corporation. Today, we are here seeking relief to do a gut rehabilitation of a three-family dwelling, to add, uh, a rear addition, and to raise the roof line three and a half feet. The violations, um, it's a two-F, five-thousand sub-district. Um, the addition creates the extension of a non-conforming use. The required FAR is point five. We are proposing point seven. The building height and the number of stories, um, it required is two-point-five. We're going, the building currently is just at three stories. We're going up to thirty-six point seven. Um, with regard to a community process, Mr. Chairman, on March fifth, we had an abudders meeting held by the applicant. It was well-attended, and a lot of, uh, the abudders were in support. On March ninth, uh, the mayor's office of neighborhood services held an abudders meeting. Again, we had a lot of support. And then on March twenty-first, we met with the Columbia Southern Hill Civic Association, and, uh, they have written a letter of support, which I will hand in for the record. I will pause at this time, and we'll entertain any questions that the board may have.
Any questions to the board?
Yes, how many bedrooms were there and how many bedrooms will there be?
I believe there were seven in the structure before. In the proposed plans, there are now eight.
How are the drawings?
Drawings are adequate.
Okay.
Counselor, uh, since it has a, an A address, is this two buildings on the same lot?
No, it's not.
No?
No.
It's, it's, okay.
It's one building. Is there anybody here to speak in favor of, uh, the applicant?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. My name is David Cottler from the mayor's office of neighborhood services. I'd like to go on record in support. Uh, I did hold an onsite abudders meeting that was attended by eight abudders. Uh, they all expressed their support for the proposal. The applicant also has the support of the Columbia Southern Hill Civic Association. Thank you.
Chair, Members of the Board, Joe McEckern, City Councilor Frank Baker's office. We'd like to go on record in support.
John Moran, one-forty-seven Grampian Way, a director abudder diagonally to the project. I wish to be recorded strongly in support. The proposed renovations fit a proper scale and fit on the site. It is also removing three derelict garages that have been vacant since nineteen fifty-four. Uh, it's a great improvement to the neighborhood. Uh, at the various community groups, there was no one speaking in opposition, and the neighborhood strongly supports the project. Thank you.
Catherine O'Neil, one-seven-zero-seven Hill Avenue, Director Abudder to the project, strongly support, uh, great improvement to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Any questions to the board? What's the, the pledge of order?
Motion to approve BPDA design review.
Second.
All votes in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Calling BOA six-six, six-six-zero-zero-six-two-five, twenty-four Greenwood Street. This is to change of occupancy from a two-family to a three-family. The violation's Article Sixty, Section Twelve. Insufficient minimum lot area is provided for a three-family building. Article Sixty, Section Twelve, insufficient additional lot area per dwelling unit is provided, is provided for conver- conversion, conversion from a two-family to a three-family building. Article Sixty, Section Twelve, insufficient FAR based on the lot size. And Article Sixty, Section Twelve, insufficient usable open space is provided for three units. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Joseph Lindsay, twenty-four Greenwood Street, Dorchester.
Can you tell us what, uh, what you're proposing?
Yes, um, so, we bought the house in nineteen ninety-seven, and when we bought it, the house was already supposed to be a three-family, but we never, since it was the first house that we bought, we never had, like, you know, know what to do to, you know, prove to us that it was a three-family, so we bought it anyway. So now, they tried to sell the house, and we were told that the house is a two-family. So we, we decided that we was gonna sell it a two-family anyway, because we were just trying to sell the house. So, we couldn't get a smoke, smoke certificate from the fire department because they said the house is a three-family. So we ran into that problem. So we had to spend all this, go through all this expense, getting plans drawn and all this other things, community support and all this, to, um, to be here today. So, we just asked that we, since the house is a, existing three-family, we have plans and everything, and we have a community letter, we have parking space and everything. We just asked-
Sir, how's it been taxed over the years? Two-family, three-family?
It's been, it's been taxed as a two-family. But there was some misunderstanding as far as ISD, I guess, is concerned, and, um, we had to, like I said, go through this process now, but the house-
So the fire department is the one initially that said that this is, it's actually a three-family?
Yes, so they, we couldn't sell the house because we couldn't get a smoke cert to sell it as a two-family. So they told me that we had to go and get it changed. So we went to ISD, we thought it was something simple. They tell us we had to, you know, so we had to spend close to ten thousand dollars getting plans drawn and all this craziness to be here today. And community, like we said, we got the community's support.
May I ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
So just to clarify, have you, have you been paying taxes as a two or a three-family?
We've been, I think we've been paying taxes as a two-family.
As a two-family?
Yes.
Okay, and where is this unit? Is it in the basement?
No, it's on the third floor.
It's in the, on the third floor. Mr. Pizani, does that have a means of egress? What's the floor ceiling?
Yes, no, it's, it, it looks to be a large, it is a large enough unit. It has an updated, uh, floor-to-ceiling height of eight foot eight. The ratchet needs to be dressed out of, you know.
And is there any use of the basement?
Um, we just have the, we just have a washing machine down there, you know?
So no living space?
No living space.
How many, how many electric meters and how many gas meters?
So we have four electric meters. We got the public, we got one for each floor, and then we have three gas meters.
Okay, is there anyone here to speak in fa- uh, in favor of the applicant?
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, John Allison, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. On behalf of Flavio De Vega, we'd like to go on record in support. Proponent does have support from the Civic Association. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Sean Cheatham, Councilor Andrea Campbell's office. We'd also like to go on record in support.
Anyone here in opposition? Is there a motion from the board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All votes in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. BOA six-nine-one-one-five-one, fifty-eight Tolman Street. This is demolition of existing single-family dwelling, erect new six-unit building. Violation's Article Twenty-nine. This is the Green Belt Protection Overlay District applicability, GPOD. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Members of the Board. My name is George Marancy. I'm an attorney with the business address of three-fifty West Broadway in South Boston. I'm joined by Ted Hearn, owner of the property located at fifty-eight Tolman Street. Uh, Mr. Chairman, Members, this is, uh, GPOD compliance only, green, uh, Green Belt Protection Overlay District. The, uh, the Green Belt roadway in question is Morrissey Boulevard. The site is at the corner of Tolman Street and Morrissey Boulevard, and this is on the, uh, the shore side of, of Morrissey Boulevard. Uh, if one were, uh, heading, uh, in Dorchester, uh, in, in the direction of, of, let's say, Cedar Grove, it would be, uh, on, on the left rather than on the right. Tolman Street, uh, runs, uh, down, uh, and, and crosses over Morrissey Boulevard. The block in question is bounded, uh, in the, in the rear by Conley Street and at the, uh, at, at the far end of the property, uh, I'm sorry, at, at the far left on, by Conley Street, at the rear of the property by, uh, Doorwood. So it's at the corner. And I say this because the zoning here is NS neighborhood shopping. So that block in question is about half-residential and about half-commercial. Um, the, uh, location of this site, fifty-eight Tolman, is, uh, is, is all residential. Uh, all of the surrounding buildings are residential. The current, uh, use of the site is a single-family dwelling on approximately a seventy-one-hundred square foot lot. The proposal calls, uh, for demolishing that and erecting a new six-unit building that would be zoning compliant. Uh, requires no relief in terms of use or, uh, or dimensional setbacks. Again, we're here only for Green Belt Protection Overlay District. Uh, Sheet C one is the site use plan, which, uh, shows, uh, the building, uh, effectively buffered on all sides by landscaped, uh, green space. The, uh, there is a three-hundred-and-fifty-eight square feet of usable, uh, open space. Uh, the requirement is fifty feet per unit, so we actually exceed the requirements of usable open space. Uh, in terms of the GPOD requir- uh, requirements, uh, it is, as the board is aware, essentially, uh, the same standards for granting the conditional use permit under Article Six, with the additional, uh, Article Twenty-nine, Section Six, GPOD requirements, namely, A, uh, the site plan needs to show provision for adequate vehicular access. There's a single curb cut here, uh, of just over twenty-one feet, providing, uh, access for eight parking spaces, all with a sufficient turning, uh, radius, uh, and, uh, is, uh, including, uh, an accessible space. The second requirement is a provision for landscape treatment that ensures the natural and aesthetic quality of Green Belt roadway will be maintained. Uh, as I mentioned, there is, uh, green space, uh, surrounding the site, including along the, uh, the Morrissey Boulevard Green Belt roadway, and this is, uh, fully landscaped green space. Uh, finally, uh, GPOD, uh, GPOD requirement is that, uh, the proposal provides for a, a design of all structures that's compatible with the surrounding neighborhood, and I would suggest that by virtue of the fact that there is no use violation, no dimensional violation, uh, that those facts are indicative, uh, of, of the fact that the, uh, that the building is in fact, uh, appropriate to the surrounding neighborhood. That'll take any questions.
Drawings are adequate.
Is, uh, anyone who wants to speak in favor of the proposal? Anyone here to speak in opposition? Is the motion to, does the mayor's office have a, uh-
We're not taking a position either way. Um, this, the proposal is zoning compliant, and we're looking at it as, as a right. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make motion to approve with continuing design review.
Second.
All votes in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. BOA six-six-zero-eight-eight-four, seventeen hundred, seventeen, seventeen oh-seven Dorchester Avenue. This is a used car, uh, used car dealership licensed for three years. Violation's Article Sixty-five, Section Forty-one. R Street parking and loading spaces shall not be located in any part of the front yard for this use, for this use at this location. Article Sixty-five, Section Eight. Outdoor sales of motor vehicles is forbidden use for this location. Name and address for the record, please.
Catherine O'Neil, one-seventy-seven Hill Ave, Dorchester.
Seventy-seven Dorchester Ave. Imad Zaridin.
Anybody who want to explain the, uh, proposal?
Sure, we're seeking relief for three spaces in order to sell, um, used vehicles.
What is, what is it currently used for?
It's a gas station.
Okay.
Has this project been before this board before?
Not to my knowledge.
Has this proposal been to this board before?
No.
So what, well, since I don't have the plans, what, what is it, the space that you- So what, since I don't have the plans, what is it, the space that you propose to be used for now?
Well, right now-
Empty space.
It's empty.
Empty garage, empty space.
What are the plans?
Drawings are adequate, shows three parking spaces.
On the side of the building or in the front yard?
On the rear lot.
The rear.
Okay, would anybody like to speak on behalf of the board? Oh, thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is David Cotter, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Would like to go on record and support. I held an onsite of Butters meeting, I'm sorry, it was not onsite. I did hold an of Butters meeting. One of Butters attended and expressed his support. The proponent also has the support of the St. Mark's Area Civic Association. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Sean Cheatham, Councilon Andrea Campbell's office, we'd also like to go on record and support.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? Motion for the board.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve, this is at the top of my street, so I was hoping that we could have BPDA design review make sure that signs and screens and buffering and all that stuff is all in line.
Second.
Chair, I just want to go on record, Joe McGovern, City Council, Frank Baker's office, would like to go on support of this project. Thank you.
All right, is the motion the second to approve? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next two cases, calling BOA 686944, 167 Poplar Street. There is a companion case, BOA 686946, 175 Poplar Street. This is for 167, erect a new two-and-a-half-story four-family dwelling. Violation is Article 67, Section 33. 67-33-12, two buildings on one lot. Article 67, Section 8. Multi-family dwelling is forbidden. Article 67, Section 9. The side yard is insufficient. Article 67, Section 9.3. Main entrance shall face the front lot line. This is for, I'm sorry. This is for 175 Poplar Street. It's existing four-unit building on a lot to undergo zoning. The violation is Article 67, Section 33. 67-33-12, two buildings on one lot. And Article 67, Section 9. Side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, John Pulgeni, 104 Throde Braintree. With me is Antonio Ferraro, who is the developer of this project. So, I'm sorry. The lot in question is a 40,170 square-foot lot. There's an existing four-family on that lot. The zoning in the neighborhood is 2F 2,000. The initial proposal that went before the neighborhood was to raise the current house and build five two-unit townhouses, which would have been zoning compliant. We heard from the neighborhood very early in the neighborhood process that they would like to retain the current building as is. It has some historical significance to them. So through several meetings with the neighborhood association, we basically took this project from an as-of-right project to a project that requires variances, because it made sense for the neighborhood, and it allowed them to increase the green space that's currently on the property. So you're gonna hear today from a few of the neighbors who were very involved in that process in support of this project.
Is this the lot outright?
That's correct.
Yeah.
The historical significance, Madam Chair, is at one point, Mary Baker Eddy, who was the founder of the Christian Science, had some, lived there for a short period of time. So there may have been a landmarks issue, but through the, as I stated, through the community process, we're able to iron things out and make it a better project for those director Butters that lived there, and also acceptable to the developer by going through the variance process.
So it looks like it's, the second building is almost abutting the first. It's not that it's in the rear of the lot or anything?
No, and that's what, one of the violations, which we had, we have a side yard violation, and that's between the two buildings itself. So on both of the, the refusals that Mr. Fortune just read out, the side yard violations of the two houses that are sitting on the same lot.
Violation two is location of the main entrance. What's triggering that?
Topography of land and a design elevation, in which we discussed with the neighborhood, trying to keep, you know, a lot of the essentials and the facade of the original house matching the new house that we're gonna build. The land slopes very high from the back to the front, and from a design perspective, they found it best to bring those entrances in from the side.
Entrances on the side?
Side.
Yep.
Do you have an elevation that shows both buildings adjacent to each other?
Um-
What are the plans?
Drawings are adequate.
I think the site drawings you should have that came through-
I want one elevation.
The two buildings were designed to neighborhood input to, basically, marry-
What I asked for was an architectural front elevation.
Oh, yes. That was handed out, I gave out eight packages that showed the front elevation of the building.
Shows the front elevation of the new building.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'd like to see how both-
Look together, I apologize, I don't have that with me.
And how large are the units?
The unit, two, new units are approximately 2,000 square feet per unit.
And it's two two-bedrooms, two three-bedrooms.
Is the, I'm a little confused. Is the existing building being left intact?
It is. And that was part of the process with the neighborhood, they wanted-
No, I, not I got, but completely intact?
Completely intact.
Or renovated?
It has been, it had been renovated previously.
Yeah, so it had been renovated, and, you know, my discussion with the neighborhood is that some cosmetics are gonna be done to the outside as far as-
Okay, okay. All right, so that's why there aren't a set of drawing boards.
Is that a roof deck?
It isn't. The existing structure has that same railing on there, so that when they did the design, they basically made the two buildings to mirror each other.
Is there anybody here to speak in favor of the proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Allison, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, on behalf of Dan Murphy, we would like to go on record and support. The applicant has worked extensively with the neighbors to change the project, and we do want to recognize there is a historic preservation element to this, that the Butters have agreed to drop if the lot remains unbuildable after this is built. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Walter Applewhite, Councilon McCarthy's office, we'd also like to go on record as support.
I'm Chairman, support Paul Sullivan, on behalf of City Council at Lodge, Michael Flaherty, echoing sentiments of the Mayor's office. Council like to go on record and support.
My name is Tom Miller, 21 Augustus Avenue, Rosendale, on Butter. We held a variety of meetings on this, five. The developer, as was stated earlier, started out with a teardown. We filed a landmarks request. We've held that until we could find if he would do what we'd like him to do, which is this plan. He's gonna retain the house, which is very important to us, and retain the landscaping area on the two sides of the building, which is extremely important. We think this building, the new building, isn't a place that's gonna be least disruptive of any place on the site. We think this is a great solution, but we really do want a deed restriction to make sure that no other further building occurs in that green space area of the site.
I have a question, but what does it mean to file or ask landmarks to do something that you now don't want done? Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
I guess I'm confused. What we-
You filed, you said you filed with landmarks, what was that about?
Yes. We will remove that, because the house is retained.
But does that then become your decision or their decision?
I've already talked to landmark. They are, they think that we should rescind this and rescind that application and go with this plan.
So it was a blocking strategy to get what you wanted?
It wasn't exactly the way it was done, but if it works, we'll take it. We think it worked very well. I think we have a good solution that everyone can-
Tom, we know how smart you are, but please.
Okay, I think we got the point.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Do you want our email of this requesting approval? Should we give it to her? Thanks.
Do you want to speak in favor?
Who are two veteran, 92 years old. I'm an exact Butter to Tony here, right? And what he's doing, he's doing it good and right, because the property's in this, they need a lot of trees to be cut down. He's gonna landscape the whole thing, it's gonna look beautiful, let me tell ya. And I was against three other contractors for that piece of property, and I won twice. I, Tony, he's what he's doing, I'm all for it.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
We've got it on record.
Yeah, right, put that on record, I'm all for Tony, okay? Because when I had meetings, when I cursed him at first, then I said, Tony, get the hell out of here, you blonde, you west rock, don't build in Rosendale. But now what he's doing, I'm all for it.
Okay.
Thank you for your service, sir.
Thank you for your service.
We wouldn't be here if it weren't for you.
All right, what's the motion of the board?
Motion for approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you. Calling the next case, calling BOA 684578, 15 Revere Street. Install a full bathroom in basement, spray foam insulation and foundation walls. Violation is Article 55, Section 9. The floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
Jay Lee, 15 Revere Street, Jamaica Plain.
Can you describe what your project is?
Sure. We purchased a two-family home back in September that we'd like to convert to a single-family home, and wanted to renovate unfinished basement as an intert, for a kid's TV room and an office.
What is the floor-to-ceiling height in the basement?
Oh.
Is it on the bottom?
It is not, but I'm familiar with the houses in that neighborhood, it's adequate.
Are drawings in general are okay?
Drawings in general are.
Okay. Does anyone want to speak in favor of the proponent?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Alexandra Valdez, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, we would like to go on record to support. We held an Butters meeting in March, and there was full support from Butters. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Andrew Balbizon from the Office of City Council, Matt O'Malley, like to go on record and support.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, on behalf of City Council at Lodge, Michael Flaherty, Council like to go on record and support.
Yeah.
What's the motion of the board? Anybody here to speak in opposition? What's the motion of the board?
Motion for approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Calling BOA 686231, 130 Manton Road. This is finishing the attic. The violation is Article 56, Section 8. The extension of living space into the attic creates an excessive FAR. Name and address for the record, please.
I'm here as a BOA, owner of 130 Manton Road, in West Lasbury. I purchased the house last year. We tried to move from a single-family to one or two-family unit for my kids, who are in the transition next year. So after we moved there, we find we have the big attic. We try to, they have the existing structure there already, and I try to fix some room.
Your one question, are you proposing to convert it from a one to a two-family?
No, it's already-
It's already a two-family, and you just want to extend it to the attic?
Yes.
Okay.
What are the drawings, Mr. Pizzani?
Drawings are adequate, it shows a floor-to-ceiling height of seven foot.
Seven and a half.
Seven foot, right.
Awesome. Okay, is there anyone here to speak on behalf of the applicant?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Jack Duggan, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We held an Butters meeting back in March, and we'd just like to go on, both neighbors were in support, and we'd like to go on record and support as well. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Shannon Murphy from Councilon Matt O'Malley's office. Council likes to go on record that he is in support of this project.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, on behalf of City Council at Lodge, Michael Flaherty, Council like to go on record and support.
Is anyone here to speak in opposition? Motion for the board.
Motion to approve with BPDA design review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries.
I'm gonna call rediscussions for some people that might have been outside. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals for the 11:30 rediscussions? Hearing number, call the first case, calling BOA 631069, 336 Chelsea Street.
Oh, that's right.
This is to demolish an existing glass shop and erect a mixed-use building which will be occupied as a funeral home in six residential units. Violation is Article 53, Section 8. Funeral home is a forbidden use. Article 53, Section 8. The multi-family dwelling is a forbidden use. Article 53, Section 56. Off-street parking is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9. Additional lot area is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9. The floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 53, Section 9. The building height is excessive, it exceeds the number of stories. Article 53, Section 9. Building height is excessive, exceeds the building height. Article 53, Section 9. Usable open space is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9. Front yard is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9. Side yard is insufficient. And Article 53, Section 9. Rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Richard Lins, 1216 Bennington Street, East Boston. On behalf of petitioner, with me is James Christopher from RCA, who's the architect. Also with me is Tim O'Brien, who's the representative developer of MG2. I also have with us Mark McGrath, who is the operator of McGrath Funeral Home. By way of brief background, this proposal involves the relocation of the existing McGrath Funeral Home, which has been a longstanding institution in the East Boston community. It's one of the last two funeral homes actually left in the neighborhood. This board in 2014 approved a project pursuant to Article 80 for the redevelopment of the existing McGrath Funeral Home site to allow for 34 residential housing units. That project is on hold pending the relocation of the McGrath Funeral Home. This board may also remember that the board actually approved the funeral home project to be relocated across the street. However, the prior developer was not able to make that project work. Financially, it did not make any sense to simply build just a funeral home at that site, and unfortunately, that has stalled development of the other project that's been approved by this board. We have gone back to the drawing board with the new developer, and that developer feels that they can make the funeral home project work based upon the required requirements to meet under the state regulations for funeral homes. It seems that to add residential to this site is the only feasible alternative financially to make this work. We've deferred this matter several times before the board in order to go back and have further discussions with the community. The community has no objection to the residential component here. The only concern the community had was about the off-street parking or the lack of the off-street parking. As for the funeral home, they do have an arrangement with the Sacred Heart Church, which is located less than a block away, to handle services with an attendant and valet parking arrangement. Our proposal to address the residential component for parking is as follows. With respect to the project that was approved across the street, there were a number of parking spaces included with that. There is availability to add additional parking on that site. We've communicated with the Boston Planning and Development Agency to determine whether or not a notice of project change would be necessary for that already-approved project. They've indicated to us that is not necessary, since we're not reducing the required parking. So we're able to accommodate additional six parking spaces, actually able to accommodate more, but a minimum of six parking spaces for the existing approved project to service the building itself, and we're happy to have that included as a proviso of this decision. I think for paperwork and housekeeping matters, we will also file for an additional ancillary use for the funeral home to allow for and sort of get the paperwork caught up, so that those six parking spaces will always be allocated to this particular building. We did have an opportunity, as I mentioned, to have several community meetings. We've met with the community on four occasions. We've made the modifications that the neighborhood had requested, and have indicated that there's no further opposition to the project, or at least none that I'm aware of, based on the last community meeting that we held. I believe we do have Butters who are here that are willing to speak in favor about the process. I'll run through quickly just some of the zoning relief that was, that's required. This is a 3F 2,000 district. What we're proposing is mixed-use. I would point out to the board that back, probably want to say maybe seven to eight years ago, this board actually approved a multi-family residential at this site for nine units. So this is sort of a hybrid of those two projects, funeral home with the residential. So we do need a variance for the use. The funeral home would be forbidden, and the multi-family use would be as well. I believe we do have Butters who are here that are willing to speak in favor about the process. I'll run through quickly just some of the zoning relief that was, that's required. This is a 3F 2000 district, uh, what we're proposing is mixed-use. Uh, I would point out to the board that, uh, back, uh, probably want to say maybe seven to eight years ago, this board actually, uh, approved a multifamily residential at this site for nine units. So this is sort of a hybrid of those two projects, uh, funeral home with the residential. Uh, so we do need a variance for the use, uh, the funeral home would be forbidden, uh, and the multifamily use would be as well. Uh, the lot area would be sufficient, uh, however, the additional dwelling units would be insufficient for the number of units that we're proposing, so we're requesting a variance for that. Uh, the lot width is sufficient, as well as the lot frontage. Uh, our front yard would be a modal setback. I would point out that the current condition that's there now is a, uh, existing commercially-used glass shop that is set way to the back of the property. Uh, it does not have any rear yard, very minimal side yards. Uh, we are proposing a rear yard, in this case of five feet. The required would be 22 and a half feet, uh, because this would qualify for the shallow lot exception under Article 53. So we're able to deduct seven and a half feet from the required 30 feet for the rear setback. Uh, proposed floor-to-air ratio is 3.12, the max is 1.0 for that neighborhood. Uh, and the open space is limited, uh, simply to the, to any decks or outside space that we have in the side yard and the rear yard. Uh, the number of stories is four, the required, uh, allowed amount is three maximum. Uh, and we do have two parking spaces for the funeral vehicles that need to access the building as part of their operation, but those are not necessarily counted towards the residential or the total square footage for the, uh, space. The unit sizes are mix, uh, anywhere from two to three-bedroom, and they range from 948 square feet up to about 1,200 square feet per unit. Um, and Mr. Christopher can answer any specific questions on design issues, um, in respect to that. I don't have anything additional, if there are any questions from the board, have it answered.
Drawings are adequate.
I have two questions, both related to the parking.
Yes.
Um, the parking that's being provided, does it meet the zoning requirements for the residential units?
It would not, uh, at the six, uh, at the level of six residential units, uh, we are required to have 1.5 spaces per unit, actually, it says 1.25. Um, so we would be, the one per unit is what we're proposing, we would actually be deficient on that as well.
Okay. And the access to the parking, is that straight off of Chelsea? Um, is it a parking garage straight off of Chelsea? Or how is it designed?
The access, uh, from what I understand, from the approved design is off of Bremen Street, which is the street right behind that runs parallel with Chelsea.
Any other questions on the board?
I just want to clarify, it's currently a one-story structure, and you're adding on top of it?
So it's a, uh, one, probably a one-and-a-half-story commercial struc- structure with a pitch roof. We're going to demolish and, uh, propose to build a four-story building.
Is, uh, is there anybody here to speak on behalf of the applicant?
Madam Chair, members of the board, let me go ahead from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Would like to go on record in support, uh, with the provision that they continue to work with the BPDA and allocate into six parking spaces at the appropriate where it crosses the street, which is 319 Chelsea Street.
What, is that parking in perpetuity?
It would, it would be.
This always happens, every time, something gets removed, and now it keeps traffic.
Yes, I think, I don't want to tell the board how to make its provi- I think the board can include a proviso that the required parking must be ancillary to 319, or ancillary parking located 319 Chelsea. It's all the same developer, so it's easy to keep track of that, and we can include that as part of the decision. And we'll, we will follow up with the paperwork to add that as an appropriate use there on that site.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Judy Evans, City Councilor, I'm at his office. He wishes to be in support and in support of this project.
Is there anyone here to speak in opposition? What's the pleasure of the board?
I want to make a proposal to, uh, approve the project with, uh, BPDA design review and the proviso that talks about, um, uh, that, uh, talks about that will be specific to, um, six parking spots being available at 319 Chelsea Street to accommodate 336 Chelsea Street. I think you might be able to handle the language on that.
I think so. Mr. Galvin, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, is there a second for that motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Calling BOA 6578-61, 2 Laurel Street.
Yeah.
This is, this is an addition of a third-floor, 90-square-foot foot bathroom addition on top of the rear L, a two-story portion of an existing three-story, single-family residence. Violation is Article 62, Section 62-25, roof structure restricted. Article 62, Section 62-8, rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is John Tobin, and I have an office address at 1 Thompson Square in Charlestown, and I represent the appellant's. The homeowners are on both my left and right, um, Elizabeth Beckton and Glenn Krugler. Um, what, what's being passed out is just, uh, some pictures, a map, so you can see the location, um, some letters of support, and a short narrative that, um, that I wrote. This project is a project to extend a very small bathroom on the third floor of, um, my client's home over an existing two-story L. This is in the back of the property, it's over an existing two-story L. Um, this was, it's 90, and it's 90 square feet. I didn't already say that. This was, I believe, before you in February, and it was deferred so the, uh, my clients could continue to work with the neighbors. Uh, there had been discussions about pulling the roof in, uh, for light considerations and things such as that, and they came up with some proposals, but we've never heard back. And it was one particular neighbor, we have several letters of support from other neighbors. So at this point, we're going with the original plan that's before you, to just square off the addition so that it's consistent with the rest of the L, rather than crimping in the roof with some kind of a mansard style, um, at the back.
Uh, Mr. Pizani, have you, have you looked at the drawings?
Yeah, the drawings are adequate, I mean, I, I don't know why this would be back here. Uh, was this Thursday night?
Well, I wasn't involved in it previously, but I believe there was something scheduled for a subcommittee at night.
Yeah.
And there was some confusion about that, and that might not have taken place. And then it came before the full board, and it was deferred because of that one neighbor's concern.
Yeah. Yeah, this is about as de minimis as we get.
Yeah. Thank you.
So would, uh, based on that, would you give a vote?
Most approve.
Second. Public comment? Want, is there, does anyone want to speak in favor of, uh, the proponent?
Um, Madam Chair, members of the board, Christopher Green, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Would like to go on record in support, we did have the meeting, um, back in February, and most of the Butters were in support.
Is anyone here to speak in opposition? What's the pleasure of the board?
Most approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you very much.
Calling BOA 666-883-10 Grime Street. This is to demolish an existing wood-framed structure, change use and argue to erect a new four-story residential condominium comprised of three dwelling units on three floors and three parking garage, three-car parking garage located at grade. Building to be wood-framed construction for walls and floors. The violation is Article 14, Section 14-1, lot size requirement is insufficient. Article 14, Section 14-2, lot area for additional dwelling units is insufficient. Article 14, Section 14-3, minimum lot width is insufficient. Article 14, Section 4, minimum lot frontage is insufficient. Article 15, Section 1, floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 17, Section 1, usable open space is insufficient. Article 18, Section 1, front yard requirement is insufficient. Article 19, Section 1, side yard requirement is insufficient. And Article 20, Section 1, rear yard requirement is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the board. My name is George Moransy, I'm an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. I'm joined by Niall Sutkin, the project architect of 197 8th Street in Charlestown.
Can you, can you just remind us why you were deferring with trying to defer it since then?
Yes, uh, Mr. Rock, we were, um, working, uh, with the neighborhood on revising plans, uh, and the plans that were submitted to the board today reflect changes from the original application. Uh, the original application as read into the record, uh, was to erect a, uh, four-story, three-unit building. Uh, the revised plans submitted today, uh, reflect a three-story, two-unit building.
Does that change the, uh, the...
It, it, it does not, um, it, uh, in, in terms of the violations, it doesn't reduce the number of violations, but I would point, uh, point out for the record that the citation under Article 19, Section 1 is incorrect, uh, pursuant to Article 19, Section 4, side yards in H districts. Uh, there is no side yard requirement for the first 70 feet of lot depth between any required front yard.
Before you go any further, is 187, 189 tied into this project?
No, it is not. Uh, same applicant, uh, uh, Colum Dunphy, who's here in the room, but they're unrelated. Uh, so the revised plans show, uh, again, in response to concerns raised during the community process of building that is, uh, certainly shorter. Uh, it has a maximum building height of 35 feet, an FAR of 2.0. It contains two dwelling units, and these are now townhouse-style units, each with an independent, uh, means of access, uh, as well as, uh, an independent, single-car garage for each unit. Uh, the violations are attributable to minimum lot area in an H150 zoning district, which was the zoning district, uh, in effect at the time of the permit application and the issuance of the refusal letter, 5,000 square feet is required under H150. This lot, uh, combined lot, 8 and 10, uh, is, uh, just over 1,700 square feet, which is, uh, very, very typical for this neighborhood and for this street. Uh, there, uh, is, uh, probably an exacerbation of the insufficient usable open space violation. Part of the agreement with the community was the removal of, uh, of roof decks, there, there's no roof deck. Uh, and there were, uh, actually, uh, originally front balconies. Uh, those have also been removed at the request of, uh, of some of the Butters. Uh, so what we're left with again is very simply two three-bedroom units, and, uh, one parking space per unit on the ground floor.
Mr. Pizani, do you have any revised set of plans?
I do.
And, uh, how are they?
Uh, the drawings are adequate. I, I assume that the sprinkler is simply an artifact leftover, right? You have a sprinkler on the...
Niall, uh, spr-...
You have a sprinkler on the stove.
Sprinklers? Yes.
I assume you're not sprinkling that.
Oh, I'm, uh, I'm assuming that we probably will sprinkler it. Uh, depending on, uh, the Boston Fire Department, uh, requirement for that, Mr. Pizani.
Is anyone, uh, for it to speak on behalf of the proponent?
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Allison, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Uh, we would like to go on record in support of this project at this point. We have held, uh, several community meetings to sort of get to an agreement. We would like to ask for BPDA design review to ensure that it does fit with the street. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Lauren Miller, City Councilor, Bill Linehan's office. We too wish to go on record in support. Thanks.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, on behalf of City Councilor Michael Flaherty, Council to go on record in support.
Is there anyone here to speak in opposition? What's the pleasure of the board?
I want to make a motion to approve with our continued BPDA design review.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Calling BOA 598-99998, 187 to 189 E Street. This is to erect a new four-story wood-framed building for six dwelling units, including six garage parking spaces on grade and raise the existing structure on lot. The violation is Article 14, Section 14-1, minimum lot size requirement is insufficient. Article 14, Section 14-2, lot area for additional dwelling unit is insufficient. Article 14, Section 14-3, lot width is insufficient. Article 14, Section 14-3, lot frontage is insufficient. Article 14, Section 4, lot frontage is insufficient. Article 15, Section 1, floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 17, Section 1, usable open space is insufficient. Article 18, Section 1, minimum front yard requirement is insufficient. Article 20, Section 1, rear yard setback requirement is insufficient. And Article 23, Section 1, off-street parking is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the board. My name is George Moransy, I'm an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. I'm joined by Niall Sutkin, the project architect of 197 8th Street in Charlestown, representing our client, Colum Dunphy, uh, who, uh, is here with us in the audience. Mr. Chairman, members, uh, similar to the, uh, immediately previous case, uh, this was deferred to allow for continued community process. Uh, the result is that revised plans have been submitted to the board reflecting, uh, new building design and new building content. Uh, the original application, uh, was for a, uh, six-unit building with a common six, uh, garage, uh, six-car, uh, garage. Appertain to that, the revised plans submitted show a, uh, two-unit, uh, proposal, two townhouse-style units, uh, on the lot. The lot in question, again, at the time, was zoned H150. Uh, the lot is, uh, about 2,036 square feet. The redesign, uh, contemplates, uh, two connected townhouse-style units separated by a common firewall, each with, uh, independent access, and each with, uh, an appertinent two-car garage. There would be one parking space, I'm sorry, one curb cut on the east street side of the property, one curb cut on the west 8th street side of the property. Uh, and the board will likely hear about that, uh, as an issue in terms of creating two curb cuts. Uh, but, uh, there, there really isn't another solution to maintain townhouse-style units, which are effectively, uh, connected, single-family dwellings, even though we did put some effort into, or Nialls put some effort into trying to redesign this into a townhouse-style configuration that would work with only one curb cut. We can speak a bit more about that, I, I presume, on rebuttal. Uh, with respect to the, uh, zoning, I do want to point out that three of the violations are, uh, are incorrectly cited. Uh, we were cited for insufficient lot width, um, twice, for some reason, I, I assume, on both sides of, uh, both east street side and the, um, in the west 8th street side. Uh, the project, in fact, has, uh, in east street address, the, the lot there is 62 and a half feet. Uh, the, uh, minimum lot width requirement, uh, in an H150 district is 50 feet. Uh, there is a fright, front yard insufficiency cited, uh, and I would just point out on that, it's not incorrectly cited, but, uh, we do, in fact, conform with, uh, existing modal alignment. One violation has been removed with the redesign. Uh, the application was cited for a violation attributable to insufficient off-street parking. That was for the original six-unit design. Uh, we are now providing two parking spaces, or trying to provide two parking spaces per unit. Uh, there are no roof decks, there are no balconies, there is, uh, uh, no outdoor space whatsoever, again, uh, in an attempt to address any concerns of the neighborhood about use of, uh, roof decks or balconies. Um, with that, I'll take any questions that any members may have.
So I'm looking at the elevations on A2, and as you said, there is a separate garage, two separate garage entrances, a seat for odd for, uh, four cars total. Uh, but it also, there's two door, two garage doors, one for each car?
Uh, it's a double-width door, uh, I believe is how it's con-
That means it's double-width curb cut, I suppose?
Six, uh, 16-foot, uh, curb cut, uh, proposed.
Why not just do a single and have them go each?
Uh, a common gar- a common garage?
Yeah.
Uh, the problem with the common garage, and I'll let Nialls explain it, that was a request. Uh, it effectively turns these into not townhouses. I mean, during the community process, my client was, uh, it was consistent requests were made for him to do two townhouse, uh, units here. Um, at the community meeting, there were, uh, there were concerns about the parking. There were also, uh, statements expressed that, that people wanted to see townhouse units that were suitable for families. Uh, in order to take this, and, and I'll let, I'll defer to Nialls after introducing this, in order to take this and introduce a, uh, a common ground-level garage for four or six motor vehicles, you have to eliminate the firewall that would separate, uh, the townhouse units, so they don't, that, that they cease being townhouse units. And once it becomes then a two-unit building, uh, we're thrown into a situation where there's an accessibility violation. So the only way Nialls was able to design it would have required a Lula lift, uh, which would in turn require a variance from the Architectural Access Board, which, uh, in my opinion, the AAB is disinclined to grant, uh, access variances on new construction. But, Nialls, do you want to weigh in a bit on that?
Yes, actually, uh, the garage door design was changed, uh, recently. We did, in fact, have a single 16-foot-wide garage door, uh, on people in my office, and I agreed. Uh, I thought, uh, the scale, uh, looked, uh, I think, more attractive for the neighborhood, making two small, uh, eight-foot-wide doors. Uh, so this is what you see, you know, currently here on the plans, uh, with...
Well, I guess I have two questions. So, so one, Mr. Ransy talked about the legal issues about it being a townhouse as opposed to maybe a condo, uh, structure, but, uh, um, even, uh, so you've got two sets of two doors, one on E Street, um...
That's right.
One on Bren- yeah. So you've really kind of, the side of the building is really dominated by garage doors. Why not, why not have a two-part, even if you're going to leave it the townhouse structure, why not have a single door opening into two spaces?
Good, uh, that is possible.
I mean, I was, I, I went to the elevation, I said, garage door is everywhere.
Yeah, okay. Certainly is possible to make that design change, yes.
How about the way, Mr. Pizani?
Drawings are adequate.
Someone want to speak in, uh, in support of the, the project?
Uh, Madam Chair, members of the board, John Allison, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support of this project at this time. It was initially proposed as a six-unit proposal, it then came down to a four-unit, and then I believe a three-unit, before finally arriving at two units. Um, we did hold in a Butters meeting Thursday night on the project. Um, there were basically two main issues that came up, one being the garage doors taking parking off the street, and the other being, um, the director Butter on E Street's desire for a three-foot setback to allow for maintenance of her property. Um, we would love to see both those things accommodated, uh, but we are in support of this project at this time. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Lauren Miller, City Councilor, Bill Linehan's office. Um, I'd like to echo John Allison from the Mayor's office. Um, we two are, would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Anyone to speak in opposition?
Hello, my name is Michael Pickup. Good afternoon, board members, Lady Chair. Uh, we are against the, um, garage parking. Not only it's, uh, two doors that are eight feet wide, there's also a, uh, foot column, and then the city is going to allow a curb cut on a radius another two feet. My point also is that it's a narrow street... My point also is that it's a narrow street, they cannot make the radius turn to get in there. On the four-unit, I have a diagram here, I'd like to present to you, that the parking could be changed. And also I have some pictures. Basically, what we're reckoning now is we're opposing the two curb cuts. I don't think that is necessary. The print that you have there is showing the four units, highlighted in the yellow, they would be able to drive in. It's just a matter of changing the stairwell system around. The second and third floor would be able to remain the same. There's many zoning and issues pertaining to this also. I do have some pictures there, also I'd like to submit pertaining to the street rebuilding. There's three different, this got deferred twice so far, because there's at least 40 people that come out and oppose this, and just last Thursday night, we did have a meeting, and there was 29 people that signed in, there was approximately 35 people that were there, and they're opposing the parking, the way the parking is. It is a tight neighborhood. I've been there 35 years, Mrs. Muldowney's been there 42 years, and she lived across the street, born and raised. We're very concerned about the parking. South Boston actually has limited parking right now. And so that's where we're at right now. So then, I did talk with the architect there last Thursday night, if there was any way I could meet with them to figure out how to get this parking. I am also a licensed builder, and I have my own ideas about it, but it's their property, it's their building. So they did just draw a print here yesterday, I'd like to submit this also, and it meets the requirements. But basically, what the neighborhood is looking for, the only thing that is not on it is the lot line, they never supplied a plot plan where Mrs. Muldowney could identify where the three-foot mark is. That is just hearsay. It's not provided in the paperwork here that that will be done. And then we did talk about rooftop decks. There is some stairs going to the rooftop. It's a full-designed set of stairs enclosed with a roof structure, and there is a parapet wall that's going 42 feet. I would, as a neighbor, and as the mayor's office described, that no rooftop decks. If that stair was just a straight ladder stair, that would prohibit people from actually congregating on the roof. But I would like to submit this print here that Kyle Sutkin and his team here drew as of yesterday. This is option A, that is their writing. I believe that is the best print pertaining to the curb cuts. It's the curb cuts that we're going against, the rooftop decks. Looking at the variance in the zoning, I'd like to touch base on that. The paperwork I have, it says the rear yard is 30 feet offset, the building is only 32 feet deep. You know, so if we stay with the zoning, that zoning is to protect the, and the variance is to protect the neighbors and the neighborhood. As you see in the pictures, it's a one- and two-family, only two stories, one and a half stories. We're allowing them to go up three. That was not an issue. The depth is not an issue, the width is not an issue. What we're really concerned about is the curb cuts. It would be, you know, 16 feet, it'd be 21 feet in either direction, and it's very small.
That's very helpful, thank you.
Mrs. Muldowney would like to speak also.
Madam Chair, Board Members, my name is Kathy Muldowney, and I am immediate a butter on East Street to this project. Originally, it did start out as a six-unit. Then in January, we got a Board of Appeal notice, and they said they would drop it to four. Then I heard just last week that they were going to come down to two, which I was very grateful for, because two fits in there nicely. The first time our neighborhood, and it's a small, tight neighborhood, had a meeting about this was Thursday evening. And on Thursday evening, about 34 people showed, and the biggest concern for them was losing four parking spaces from the curb cuts. Parking is such a premium, people are circling and circling, they're blocks away. We would really like the board to ask him to do one entrance, if possible, a common garage, so that everybody could be there, or if not, at least eliminate two parking spaces on each street. We have the school, well, it was San Augustine School, right opposite this, and there's 34 units there. Parking is definitely going to increase because of that, and we have two proposals in the neighborhood ready to be built on. So, and my personal thing is, I had asked that they stay three feet away from my property line, and I would like to hold to that. I want to be able to get at my property, Jeff, for maintenance, whatever.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions on the board? Let's pledge to the board.
Motion for approval, sorry. Motion for approval with a BRE design review, with specific attention on resolving that parking garage issue, and also ensuring that there's enough space between buildings to allow for property maintenance.
Second. Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Okay, well, we hope that you can, it seems like there's solutions that are out there, and we hope that you can find them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling BOA 674-086, 10 Moreland Street. This is to change oxygen from a one-to-two family and extend living space into the basement. Violation is Article 52, Section 9, excessive FAR. Article 50, Section 26, excessive FAR, and Article 50, Section 43, insufficient parking. Name and address for the record, please.
And one owner of 10 Moreland Street, proposing to change a row middle brick house to a floor into two units. My violation is parking, missing one parking and then excessive FAR, but the people in my block, they all, most of them have four stories and no parking.
You were before, just to clarify, this particular case was before the subcommittee, and we, there was some opposition there, and we decided that it would probably make sense for there to be a community meeting and to come back to the full, the full board. So did you have your community meeting?
Yes, yes, I have the meeting on March 21st, and after that, I also met with many butters, because only one butter went to that meeting. So I got 30 signatures and support, which I already provide to the record.
And we were also, I think, had questions about the basement. Was, what's the floor-to-ceiling height?
It's eight foot, two inches.
And what's the use of the basement?
It would be entertaining, most of the area would be entertaining, and proposing one bedroom.
One bedroom?
Yeah.
Do you have a drawing that shows that use in the basement?
Yes. Do you need some more copies?
Are these drawings that you're giving out different from us, Mr. Mulvaney?
Same, the same one.
Okay.
It's just two sets.
Again, please help me. I have a basement plan, and it simply says storage.
No, that's existing. There's proposed, the other ones.
Thank you. So entertainment and proposed bedroom in the basement with a bathroom.
Are they right?
Drawings are adequate.
And the utility room is separate?
The utility room is not shown.
There's one in a second floor, and we'll separate into two. So there'll be one in the basement also.
Is anyone here to speak in favor of the application?
So, excuse me, in the basement, there's a utility room?
Right underneath the stairs, it says utility. In the front, in the front.
All right. Madam Chair, Members of the Board, John Allison, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, on behalf of Josh McFadden, we'd like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Anyone here to speak in opposition? Pledge of the board.
Motion to approve with BPDA design review.
Second. Aye. All opposed?
Thank you.
Calling BOA 648-704, 1857 to 1859 Dorchester Avenue. This is direct, a 20-unit multifamily dwelling to include two accessory retail units. Violation is Article 65, Section 41, off-street parking insufficient parking. Article 65, Section 65-41, off-street loading requirements. Article 65, Section 39, screening and buffering. Article 65, Section 9, number of stories allowed have been exceeded. Article 65, Section 9, additional lot area is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 65, Section 9, building height is excessive. Article 65, Section 9, usable open space is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9, side yard is insufficient. And Article 65, Section 9, rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. My name is Kevin Cludier from the Cludier Law Firm located at 1990 Center Street in West Roxbury. I'm the attorney for the project. I'm joined today by the proponent of the project, Steve Connolly, the current owner of this site, the would-be developer, and also the would-be property manager, as well as Cheryl Tagheas, who's the project architect. And we're here proposing a 20 residential unit to include three IDP units and two ground-floor retail units, consistent with both the intent and character of the MFR LS district this location is in, and consenting with the trending area development in that Ashmont section of Dorchester. The plans before the board are the product of, you know, extensive community outreach to include two rounds, initially with the BPDA's urban design team, meetings with the Ashmont Adams Neighborhood Association, which is basically an abutting neighborhood association, but pretty much within the sphere of this project, as well as the Ashmont Hill Neighborhood Association, once again, an abutting association within the sphere, and directly with the St. Mark's Neighborhood Association, which essentially has jurisdiction within this neighborhood. And furthermore, we did approve, receive BPDA approval through their Article 80 Small Project process, and I've included for the record the BPDA's memorandum recommending approval of this project. With respect to some of the variances that we're facing, and due in large part, we're dealing with a pretty uniquely shaped lot, if you'll notice from the plans, it's very narrow, and it extends from Dorchester Ave and is bound in the rear by the Redline MBTA. And the rear lot line is perpendicular to the Dorchester Ave lot line, so it creates some unique dimensional issues. So we are seeking variances for the lot area, as well as FAR, including height, and I can speak to the height. We did go up one story during the BP, the urban design process. What that allowed us to do was to place more off-street parking on the lot, as well as to introduce additional green space, and then allowed us to take the front of the building to close off, the existing lot really is just an open lot, it's a bit of an eyesore. What this project does, it achieves street wall continuity by turning the front of the building to a butt directly along Dorchester Ave, while the side of the building runs in an L shape back towards the rear of the lot, with the massing facing the Ashmont area where the development is trending. So some of the, again, we had to work with unique dimensions of the lot, and with the side yard and rear yard violations, again, really kind of a, subject to the lot lines and requirements, we're well within the range on one side, but for the side yard setback, but obviously on the other side, we're right up against the lot line. And the rear yard, again, is a kind of an odd shape in that it's a diagonal lot line that a butts right up against the tunnel for the Redline. As far as parking goes, we are providing really a 1.2 ratio in what is a 1.5 area, and out of 32 required, we have 24 provided, and we feel that's a strong compromise, and we're seeing well with the residents of that area, to alleviate any congestion on the residential side streets, but also taking into consideration its proximity to the Ashmont MBTA station. So pending any questions, that's our proposal.
Okay. How are the drawings?
Drawings are adequate.
Okay. Any questions on the board? Is anyone here to speak in favor of the project?
Good afternoon, Members of the Board. My name is David Cottler from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record in support. There was a very long and involved community process associated with this project run through the BPDA. Overwhelmingly, the community supports the project. Some of the comments that we did hear that were negative, some folks wanted to see actually fewer parking spaces, given its proximity to the Redline T Station, they wanted to see a more transit-oriented building. And actually, some folks actually wanted to see a bigger building as well, given its location on Dorchester Ave and its proximity to public transportation. Again, we'd like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Sean Cheatham, Counselor Andrea Campbell's office. Would like to echo the sentiments of the mayor's office and go on record in support of this project. Thanks.
Is anyone here to speak in opposition? Pledge of the board.
Motion for approval, continued BPDA.
Second. Aye. All opposed? More than carries?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling into, calling into the record now, case number BOA 81, I'm sorry, 618715, 32 Cummings Highway. Bear with me, this is my first time, my maiden voyage. So I'm going to read into the, read into the record the violations. Article 67, Section 8, use regulation application applicable in residential sub-district. Article 67, Section 9, open space insufficient. Article 67, Section 9-1, dimensional regulations applicable in residential sub-districts. Article 67, 9-1, residential regulations, I'm sorry, dimensional regulations applicable in residential sub-districts. Article 67, Section 9-1, dimensional regulations applicable in residential sub-districts. Article 67, Section 9-1, dimensional regulations applicable in residential sub-districts. Article 67, Section 9-1, dimensional regulations applicable in residential sub-districts. Article 67, Section 32, off-street parking insufficient. Article 67, number 32, off-street parking. Article 67, Section 30, screening and buffering required. Counselor.
Good evening, good afternoon, Members of the Board. Excuse me. Sorry.
Almost.
My name is Patrick Mahoney at Adams &amp; Moranci with the business address of 350 West Broadway, joined by the developer, Josh Fetterman, with an address of 320 Washington Street in Brookline. The proposed project that we have before you today is a nine-unit development with 12 parking spaces. Each unit is a two-bedroom, two-bath, ranging from 990 square feet to approximately 1,243 square feet. Some of the violations have been eliminated, eliminated through the design process. Just to go over them quickly, initially, the project started as a modern building with 14 units, and all of these violations cited, with the exception of screening and buffering. Screening and buffering is not required in a residential sub-district. The parking facility that it discusses in that section relates to commercial parking, parking lots. There is screening and buffering on the left side, however, just as part of the design. Additionally, the rear yard, front yard, and side yard violations have been eliminated. The rear, proposed rear yard here is 40 feet, and 40 feet is required. The side yard is 10 feet, there's 10 feet on either side. There is an exception for side yard with buildings not parallel to the side lot line, and that essentially says the, is- And that essentially says the, as long as the average distance of that side yard is more than, more or at the minimum requirement, which is ten feet, and it is. At the furthest point, it's a little over thirteen feet. And at its narrowest point, it's, it's nine and a half feet approximately. Additionally, the front yard, it's, we have a modal alignment, there's an exception for that with sixty-seven dash thirty-one subsection one, which, which the front yard requirement could also be the existing building alignment with, which is the prominent front yard of, of the block on that side of the street, which is eight feet, three inches, and that's what we have proposed. So with, with the violations that we do have, the MFR is a forbidden use in a two F district. This is a multifamily residential building, it's a nine unit building. And in the, although prohibited by zoning, very, very consistent with the area, the use, I mean. Additionally, we have a front yard, excuse me, a parking violation. Eighteen spaces are required, there's two spaces per residential unit for, in the two F five thousand sub-district. And we have twelve spaces proposed. And finally, open space is seventeen hundred and fifty square feet per unit. And we have approximately ten thousand.
What's on the site right now?
It's a, it's a three-family home.
It has a very wide driveway, yes, I know it.
It does, yeah. The, one change throughout the neighborhood process, I think a significant one, was the, the architectural style of the building. If you could go to.
Why is he looking, Mr. Muldowney? How are the drawings?
Drawings are adequate.
The second to last page, AV three, I think it provides a pretty detailed context of the building. Additionally, height violation, although still exists, it's no longer both number of stories and vertical distance from the median grade to the top of the roof rafters. The thirty, it is, the roof is thirty-five feet, which is allowed. However, it does exceed point five stories, is two point five stories is the requirement here. Specifically, the number of dormers underneath the half-story definition is exceeded. So, but it is very close to being half a story by the definition.
All right, any questions on the board? Would anyone like to speak on behalf of the project?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dan Murphy, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. After a lengthy community process, developers had worked very closely with the butters to hear their initial concerns regarding this development going in the neighborhood, which primarily focused around sightlines and encroachment on the property. Since some of those initial meetings, they had reduced the scale and setbacks, which ultimately resulted in majority support from the community. So I'd like to go on record of support today.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Walter Affaw, Council McCarthy's office. We'd also like to go on record as support.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, Justice Counselor Lawrence Michael Flaherty. Counsel to go on record in support.
Is anyone here to speak in opposition? Let's pledge of the board.
Motion for approval with continued BRA design review with the request to see that there be as much screening and buffering so that there's just not an impression that it's totally tar at the back. Also request a developer that in the future, if proposals can come in more in keeping with the neighborhood, that would be fantastic.
All in favor? Would, second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I need you to immediately adjourn.
Thank you.